Good afternoon and welcome to the September twenty 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 four, twenty twenty four. Work session of the mayor and city council for the city effect. Sorry, I'm reading the voting section, sorry. Good afternoon and welcome to the work session for September sixteenth, twenty twenty four. For the mayor and city council, this meeting is now called to order, my apologies about that. And now I will read the preliminary agenda for our one hundred and one voting session for September twenty four. Um, at five thirty is a work session and council chambers, second floor, seven P M. A regular session. Uh, call to order, I'll call the meeting to order, we will have invocation, uh, council member Schindler. Um, pledge to the flag, announcements, rules of procedure effective December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for October is Tuesday, October first, work session at two thirty P M. Tuesday, October eighth, twenty twenty four, work session at four P M. Tuesday, October fifteenth, there's a work session at four P M. Tuesday, October twenty second, there's a regular session at seven P M. Tuesday, October twenty ninth, there is no meeting scheduled. Uh, we'll have agenda items, citizen comments. Uh, citizen comments on agenda items shall be limited to top topics listed for consideration on this agenda and limited to three minutes. Um, citizens are welcome to provide comments in person or by sending an email to councilcomments@hagerstownmd.org. No later than five P M. On Tuesday, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Include your full name, home, street address and topic of your comments. You may attach a letter to the email or write your comments in the body of the message. The city clerk will read your name, address and provide a summary of the comments. The full copy of the comments will be provided for public viewing as part of the minutes. Uh, and we'll have minutes, uh, approval for minutes for August sixth, August seventh, August thirteenth and August twenty third. Um, in our consent agenda, we have communication, we have N A S. Storage devices. Maiden Spire, um, Annapolis, Maryland, twenty-three thousand, one hundred and one dollars and forty-six cents. Uh, community engagement, uh, Bispa Foundation Lamp Post Sponsorship Program. Engineering, we have intersection upgrades for C W. C. William Hetzer, Inc., Hagerstown, Maryland. One million, six thousand, nine hundred, three dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, Helane Park fencing upgrade, horse fencing service, Hagerstown, Maryland for fifty thousand dollars. For fire, we have training center tower building upgrades, uh, material is to be presented and. That's right in front of you, that's the material. Uh, warehouse lighting at nine two nine Eldridge Drive, M E. C. Inc., Hagerstown, Mar- Maryland, forty-three thousand, eighty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. Garage door replacement at nine two nine Eldridge Drive Interstate Garage Doors, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania. Sixteen thousand, six hundred, fifty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. For information technology, Intellytime Clock Hardware Software Setup. In Intellytime Systems Corporation, Santa Ana, California, nineteen thousand dollars, nineteen thousand, thirty-five dollars. Beam backup renewal, S H. I. International Corp., Somerset, New Jersey, nineteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. For planning and code administration, two thousand, twenty-four Chevrolet Silverado. Sport Chevrolet Company, Inc., Silver Spring, Maryland, forty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. For police, we have A V. C. C. Annual Subscription Fee for Lexus Nexus, Chicago, Illinois. Twenty thousand, nine hundred, five dollars and fifty cents. Twenty twenty-four Chevrolet Tahoe, Hettridge Fleet Services, Milford, Delaware, fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. Vehicle uplifting, East Coast Emergency Lighting, Inc., Millstone Township, New Jersey. One hundred, three thousand, thirty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. Pinlink Software License and Upgrade, Pinlink, Lincoln, Nebraska, thirty-nine thousand, five hundred, twenty dollars and twenty-six cents. Physical year reimbursement for community-based prosecutor, Washington County Treasurer, Hagerstown, Maryland. Eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Allied Agency Overtime, Washington County Tre- Washington Country Treasurer? Okay, Washington County Treasurer, Hagerstown, Maryland, twenty thousand dollars. Ballistic Vets, Atlantic Tactical, Riley, North Carolina, thirty-four thousand, four hundred, fifty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. For utilities, water, uh, ten fi- ten. Is that inch or foot? Remember last time I said it? Ten-inch fire, domestic meter, court in Maine, Martinsburg, West Virginia, thirty-one thousand dollars. Water, lead and copper rule compliance program, Hazen and Sawyer, Baltimore, Maryland, five hundred, sixty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, water, annual cor- coronator maintenance, environmental service and equipment company, L T. D. Marcus Foot, Pennsylvania, eleven thousand, twenty-three dollars. Waste, water and wastewater, stone and asphalt, Craig Paving, Hagerstown, Maryland, fifty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. Water and wastewater, stone and asphalt, C. W. William Hetzer, Inc., Hagerstown, Maryland, thirty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. Water and wastewater, stone and asphalt, Martin Marie Marietta, Williamsburg, oh, Williamsburg, what is happening? Williamsfoot, Maryland, forty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. For unfinished business, we have approval of an ordinance, twenty twenty-four land management code amendments. For new business, introduction of an ordinance, amending chapter thirty, transient housing of the city code. And then for introduction of resolution to ratify annexation, um, A dash two zero two four dash zero two. Um, I seventy row eight, one eight, three, two, zero, and one eight, three, zero, six, Colonel Henry K. Douglas Drive. Colonel Henry K. Douglas Drive Row. And the dates are actually on this, um, which is the motion, which isn't in your pocket, you guys. So the dates. Approval of a resolution, user agreement with Hagerstown Area Youth Athletic League, H A Y. S. L. Approval of a resolution, user agreement for Police Athletic League, P A. Approval of a resolution amended and re- restated purchase agreement with Columbia Gas at four forty-one South Potomac Street. Approval of updates to guidelines and application for the C D. B. G. Micro Enterprise Grant, Micro Enterprise Grant Program. Approval of updates to guidelines and application for the C D. B. G. Single Family Repair and Rehabilitation Grant and Loan Program. Approval of a acceptance of warrant apprehension grant. Approval of lease of free space for H P. D. Operations. Approval of Alternative Response Team Program. Approval of A F. A F. S. C. M. E. Contract Reopener. Then we'll have general citizen comments and general citizen comments are welcome and shall be limited to three minutes. Um, again, citizens are welcome to provide comments in person or by sending an email to councilcomments@hagerstownmd.org. No later than five P M. On Tuesday, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. You need to include your home address, your full name and topic of your comments. You may attach a letter to the email or write the comments in the body of the message. The city clerk will read your name, address and provide a summary of the comments. The full copy of the comments will be provided for public viewing as part of the minutes. We'll have the city administrator comments, mayor and council comments, and then we will be adjourned. That's good? There's that. And we have community support groups, mayor and council stakeholder discussion. And with us, we have Ms. Teresa Cersei, Director of Case Management with Community Action Council. Ms. Jeannie Asbury, Executive Director with Reach. We have Mr. Dave Schuster, President and C E. O. With Horizon Goodwill Industries. And then we have Ms. Melissa Dash, did I say that wrong? Melissa Dash, uh, Direct Division Director of Rehabilitation and Recovery with Shepherd Pratt. Would you guys please join us at the table? Look at that, they have chairs already waiting around. And if you want to move the chair. Sorry. Hi, everybody.
Well, thank you all for coming and and responding to, uh, to the invite. Again, this is another, this is the fourth opportunity we've had, uh, for the mayor and council to hear from stakeholders uh, related to various aspects of community or of community issues that have been, uh, advertised out, uh, in the airwaves and social media. And this opportunity is for you all to deal, uh, directly with some of of the individuals that have been, um, that have been spoken about, just a chance for each of you to explain what your roles are within the community. And then, of course, a chance for the council to, uh, to ask questions and and get clarification, that kind of thing. So, Jeannie, if you want to start?
Great, um, so thank you very much for this opportunity to be here.
So, Reach. Sorry, I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself, um, for the record?
Yeah.
We know you.
So, Jeannie Asbury, um, the Executive Director of Reach of Washington County. And I brought with me the expert with twenty years, our Director of Housing and Case Management, Jill Zamasne. Okay, so Reach is a nonprofit that's been, um, in existence for thirty-four years. From its inception, it's a collaboration. It started with several houses of faith came together and realized there's a problem we need to, um, address. And so it started with like a twenty-four hour hotline call and then eventually led to a day program that's still in existence or drop-in center. So that's somewhere that people can go to get out of the weather, hot or cold. Um, during the non-shelter season, the homeless can take a shower and do laundry. It's where you can get your mail, um, without a physical address. How do you get your real I. D. Card, which has to be mailed now? Um, how do you get that housing letter and various important documents? So that is something that is provided year-round. Um, everything but the cold weather shelter is year-round. So, uh, then the shelter came about. So the shelter's been twenty-something years and different houses of faith come together. I say that because most of them are churches. However, the synagogue and the mosques are also involved. Um, so they all come together, um, to provide volunteers, takes fifteen to twenty every single night to run the shelter. That variation is if you have, we all know those five ladies that don't need, or people that don't need anyone in their hair in the kitchen. Um, versus you can have up to ten, whether it's youth, um, different groups, businesses, all come together. They provide dinner every night. Uh, Reach does not provide the dinner. So, um, that is truly a community collaboration, which is wonderful. So in addition to that, um, we try to prevent homelessness. So we have twice a week year-round where we use mainly local funding to do, um, eviction prevention, a security deposit. So even when you get into housing, um, you have to have a traditional, uh, security deposit. Um, so we help with that, I. D.'s, birth certificates, kids can't start school without an I. D. Um, and you need everything to get your I. D. To get employment, housing or crucial services. So, uh, utility shut-off, things like that. Um, we have our financial literacy program, which, um, is to help people learn a budget, right? Regardless of your income, regardless, if you don't have a budget, you're not going to have enough money. But also learn, we now see that poverty is generational. So you have to learn to make a budget. My girls have a mom in finance, so an example I used for many years, if we go to McDonald's after school, I was hungry. I pick them up, um, at the end of the week, that was a hundred dollars. They're in college now, that was a while ago, right? So I said, okay, at the end of a week, that's a hundred dollars, that's half of a plane ticket to go see grandma. I'm from California, which means Disney. We can either go to McDonald's every day, right? Or we can go to Disney in the summer. An example our former financial literacy success coach used was, it was ten dollars, again inflation. You get ten dollars, you go to the convenience store, you leave with one meal. You go to the grocery store, again, it's probably closer to fifteen to twenty now. You get a loaf of bread, peanut butter, lunch meat, a bag of apples or oranges, you have lunch for the week. These are skills that have to be taught. And these are skills that are crucial for the, um, strength of our community. So that's why we teach financial literacy. Um, and then, of course, our Bridge to Change Program. So our Bridge to Change Program started in twenty nineteen with, uh, Councilwoman McIntyre. And the former director both saw the video in Fort Worth at the same time. And so what we do is we, um, chip goes alongside to mentor, um, and work alongside clients that have been cleared by case management that are ready for change to pick up trash within the city of Hagerstown. Um, however, they're also learning those soft skills. You have to show up to work, you can't pick up, you have your picker in your bag in one hand, can't leave in the middle of the shift with your girlfriend. Uh, you can't buy alcohol in your uniform, um, all real examples. And what they learn is those soft skills, confidence and build up a stamina. You haven't been doing anything, how do you just start working eight hours? Um, and so that program, it's wonderful because the city benefits, but it's truly for those to gain that independence to go on to workforce development, employment and hopefully get housed. The crucial piece for all of this is our case management. And that's why I asked Jill, um, she actually helped create the case management program in twenty-ten. Homelessness is complicated, there's not one way in or one way out. The services a single mom needs is different than what an elderly individual with a background, um, versus a veteran. Um, so their individualized case management is that crucial piece to connect what is it that you need to resolve your homelessness? So I thought I'd share part of my fifteen minutes so Jill could share her magic.
Hi, I'm Jill, I'm the Director of Housing and Case Management. I've been at Reach since two thousand and five. Um, originally started strictly working in the shelter and at that point we were basically just housing people. Um, but there was definitely a need to help them move on and so we created our case management program. Um, right now we have myself and one other case manager. Um, so we work with the folks that stay in our shelter. Um, so we work with the folks that stay in our cold weather shelter, but we also work with individuals in the community. So we work with, um, the folks that are staying at the Union Rescue Mission, um, the one the Salvation Army was open. Saint John's Family Shelter, um, anybody on the street. So we can take referrals from anybody that's homeless. So we're not just working with our shelter residents. So we do an assessment with them. We find out what it is that they're looking to get help with. Some people, it's not housing, they're not ready for housing. So we work on some of those small steps to get them hopefully closer to that housing piece. Right before this meeting, I was actually, um, we have, um, case conferencing call every two weeks with the other providers. So that's Reach, um, C A. C. Horizon Goodwill, Potomac Case Management, CASA. So we're all working together in collaboration to talk about, um, in this particular meeting specific clients. Maybe some of those hard-to-place, maybe a little bit resistant to, um, services. We collaborate and talk about those to see how we can work together to help that person. We have providers that come into our shelter to provide outreach. We have a handful of veterans that come into our shelter each year, so we work pretty closely with, um, the Martinsburg V. A. To provide services to them. We work closely with Potomac Case Management. Their outreach services come into our shelter every week. So we try to collaborate as much as possible, um, Horizon Goodwill has come into our shelter. And then through our day program, we get people that just walk in, whether they need to use the bathroom, um, they're getting their mail. Um, and they can be referred to us as well. The, I think the key piece of what we do is not everybody's going to be ready when we, when they meet with us. And we try to make that connection with them. If they're not ready right now, we stay in touch with them and try to eventually work towards those goals. Sometimes it takes a couple of weeks, sometimes it takes a couple of years. We have clients that have been there since I've been there and we're going to continue to try to work with them regardless of how long that they've been there. So we, it's definitely gotten more challenging over the years, but we keep doing what we're doing and try to make a difference. You know, I think one of the frustrating things is I don't think any of us got into this position because we want, we don't want to make a difference. We wouldn't stay in this position if we didn't want to make a difference and that's what we're trying to do every single day.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Teresa Cersei, I am the Chief Client Officer at Community Action Council. I have been there since April twenty twenty-one, so right in the middle of the pandemic. Uh, so came in a kind of a different climate, I think, in the community. Just learning how to, what our new normal was. And so the C A. C., um, and just a really brief history, eleven hundred across the nation, there are seventeen in the state of Maryland. Um, we do receive a, uh, Community Services Block Grant to do what we do, it's how we exist. The main services and and really each community action is different because you really look at the needs of the community and determine what services, um, we should offer to be able to make a difference in the community. Um, so at Community Action, we offer, of course, the housing assistance. We do work closely with a lot of our community partners, um, again, with just the same, walking that path with them to to help them, whatever that next step is. So housing is eviction prevention, it is helping the homeless, um, either in shelters or on the street. We offer energy assistance, um, uh, which is an entitlement program through the state of Maryland. Lots of changes this year, which we can discuss if you'd like. Food pantry, which we've seen a huge increase over the last several, not just, uh, years, but months, months have been really increasing. Um, and then we have a circles program, which is our, um, our poverty, um, alleviation is the, is the idea. There's a two-pronged approach there, you are working closely with families and individuals for eighteen months. On the other side, you are working to, uh, look at policy and things that are in place that are kind of keeping these households from, uh, sur- surviving, whatever it might be, and push them forward to become self-sustaining. Um, and then lastly, we have our mobile services, which that was a pilot program about two years ago. Has really taken off and and taken hold, um, not only in the city of Hagerstown, but the county in general. We've gotten out to a lot of different places throughout the county, uh, to give services to those who are not able to get into the city and get into our office. Uh, but we take those services on the road. So we've actually set up some satellite pantries throughout the county, um, helping those around, um, who, again, can't get in or or have transportation. And lastly, we have transportation, and if you've seen our cat licenses, I'm sure, across the city. They provide workplace, our workforce, uh, development, uh, workforce transportation to the well area. And we also have non-emergency, uh, transportation. So if if individuals need to get to appointments within Washington County, we can pick them up and take them there free of charge. So those are the five pillars of our service at C A. C. Thank you.
Um, Melissa Dash with, um, Shepherd Pratt, but I'm going to give our history, which involves many name changes. Um, so we were known as Turning Point many moons ago, um, and then merged with a company or an organization called Way Station Incorporated. And both names are now dead. We are Shepherd Pratt, um, but the same services still exist and the same staff, many of the same staff still exist. Um, so we are the only residential, um, psychiatric rehab provider in the country, I'm sorry, country, in the county. I did the same thing. Um, and, um, they, you know, that basically is clients who are referred through the Corps Service Agency, um, of Washington County to us. And that actually is, you know, state, state-led. So many of those referrals are actually coming from state hospitals in the state of Maryland. Through the Corps Service Agency, they determine which one is the highest priority and then is released to us based on our bed vacancies. We have forty-one current beds in the county. At varying, um, levels of intensity, so twenty-four-seven staffing, forty hours a week staffing is the next lowest or next level down. And then, um, our general level staffing, um, essentially is, um, you know, an an eight-hour shift of availability to those clients, but not necessarily constant supervision of any sort. And to be clear, the twenty-four-seven staffing, it's not locked down, it's not, there, there's no curfew, there's no, um, expectations around those kind of boundaries. They can come and go as they please. They are urged to take medications and participate in services. If they don't, usually bad things happen and then we have to discharge, but it's not necessarily a requirement, to be clear. We also, um, offer supported living, um, so we have some apartments, uh, in the community, um, that we can offer to cer- certain clients if they really kind of meet their, you know, qualifications of that apartment and then we rent it to them as a lease, as a leaser, um, as a landlord. Um, but then we also in turn provide in-home services to those individuals. We'll also provide services to someone at their family's home or if they're homeless, help them with their services. Um, or, uh, they could also be, um, you know, uh, living very independently on their own, but just need a little extra support. So that might look like assistance with grocery shopping, doctor's appointments, budgeting, um, you know, a lot of the same things that kind of we're talking about just on a more one-to-one kind of level with the staff assigned to them. We offer community employment services, we work very closely with doors for those services. Um, we have a sort of community treatment team, it's a fidelity-based model, um, like a mobile treatment, but not mobile crisis. So we have a team, there's a prescriber, there's nurses, there's a therapist, there's a housing coordinator, there's a, um, a job coordinator. They work together to serve the, generally the most intense clients, somebody who, um, cannot consistently attend their psychiatric appointments, their doctor's appointments, they are, um, habitually incarcerated or, uh, or hospitalized or homeless. And so those are services ideal for those folks. Um, we also have substance use and clinic services, um, a prescriber and, um, a variety of therapists that, um, is open to Washington County residents, um, and we are actively enrolling. Um, we have a day program for any of the clients that are in those other support programs, for the most part, are welcome to come into our day program or can be referred just for that program alone. Um, and then, um, we have our mobile crisis services, um, which is grant-funded currently. Hopefully we'll be, um, transitioning to a fee-for-service model in the future. Um, and they are open to the entire Washington County, um, population. Um, they do go all over the county, um, to see people, we, um, they can respond via phone, we can respond in person. Um, we have M. O. U. S. With the school system to go into the school during crisis situations as well and support there. Um, and they are, um, a variety of either specialists or licensed individuals who are helping to work specifically with, and that's the, the grant's, um, expectation is to work with law enforcement. So we have access to radios for both, um, the sheriff's office and H. P. D. To be able to hear when there's, um, some sort of mental health disturbance and we can dispatch ourselves to, um, that scene and work with law enforcement to be able to prioritize what are the needs of this individual and what's the situation going on. Um, they also work closely with the Health Department around substance use and harm reduction. So that we are really partnering at all times and getting these people into the services that they need most. The idea is to avoid hospitalization and to avoid an E. P. Um, because ultimately if we can help them to stay in place, that's actually probably more, um, beneficial in the long run than them going to the hu- the hospital only to end up in the E. D. For four hours and then get turned around and said, you don't need us. And then it's just a frustration on everybody's part. Um, and then, uh, I think that pretty much covers it. There is, um, a small program that's working in some of the schools in Hagerstown, um, specifically that is, um, doing some therapy and some support as well. It's a kind of a smaller grant-funded program as well.
Thank you.
All right, um, Dave Schuster, President and CEO of Horizon Goodwill Industries. I have to apologize upfront for my slightly raspy and angry sounding voice. I am not angry, I'm at the tail end of a respiratory thing, so I'm just a little hoarse at this point, so I apologize for that. So just bear with, bear with me, um. I did distribute some information, hopefully you all got it to the council ahead of time, thinking I could save everybody some time. Um, but I want to just tou- touch on a couple of ones because there's a lot of different programs, uh, that we have, that we've embarked upon. But at a high level, all Goodwills were one of a hundred and fifty-four that are in this country, our workforce development organizations primarily. Founded on the belief that helping people acquire skills. Our workforce development organizations primarily founded on the belief that helping people acquire skills and to be gainfully employed is a, is a critical piece of the pathway out of poverty, out of subsidy reliance, out of all of those things. That was the founding of the movement. What we started to realize here locally, actually pre-pandemic in 2019, but particularly exacerbated by the pandemic locally, is that what if having a job isn't enough? Or what if there are confounding barriers and factors that we might go help you get a job, but you can't keep that job? For instance, being, as we, as others here will tell you, being homeless, it's a little difficult to show up to work reliably every day if you don't have a secure place to go home to at night. So we started realizing that it, it's great that we can continue to do the things that we've been doing historically, helping people with resume, you know, working on their resumes and getting job skills and connecting credentials at the community college, wherever the case may be. But if we weren't also working with folks to help address those other things, then what's the point? To be perf, to be perfectly honest. And so that's why you will see what, to some people's eyes, may sound like a duplication of services when you look at the list of things that we're doing. Because there's a lot of things that my colleagues here have shared already that they also do. But one of, one of the things that we have started doing in concert with our, with our Goodwill colleagues across the country is looking at different models that really endeavor to put the person first and try to figure out what are the barriers to people actually accessing the services and how can we, how can we help them? And so what we, what we've noticed, particularly with any population, I think everybody will agree, and one of the individuals, those at the public safety meeting last night actually said this really well, it was a good key point, I thought, was that you have to really understand where someone's from in order to help them successfully, because otherwise you're going to fail. And so that is sort of the model we've shifted to. That's why I wanted to provide that sort, that sort of background information. Because we then are able to figure out whether it's a program that we now are operating that may be a little bit different and better suited to a person than one that's been in existence in the community for a long time, or whether it's one of those community programs that we can refer somebody to, how that might work. Because I think we all know, not everybody comes to Reach's door first. Not everybody comes to the CAC's door first. Not everybody comes to Goodwill's door first, right? You go typically where you may feel most comfortable, particularly when you need, when you need support and assistance. So it's not necessarily a bad thing, in our opinion, for multiple organizations to be running similar programs that may operate slightly differently, as long as they're all still running in some level of coordinated fashion, which I believe you've already heard from, from others here, is, is what I think as a community we endeavor to do. So that was really, unless you have any specific questions about the materials. I wasn't going to read through every single program that we do for the, for the interest of time and wanting to be able to, I think, participate in a conversation instead of me running through a list of 20 things.
Counsel, how do you guys want to do this? You want to ask questions to specific? Or do you just want to, how about you just take it away?
Well, I'm sorry. One thing for joining, especially it's busy schedules. We really appreciate it. So a lot, one question we've been asking stakeholders, organizers, entities that are coming here to provide educational background is what can the city do for you guys? And try my way.
Do you just want to go clockwise rationale?
Maybe it's just popcorn style. That's a mediation term.
One thing that, that you could do that isn't necessarily to give, but some, to help us educate people. There are six shelters. So I brought the guides. I, I left all my Hark food bank lists that our friends at Hark give out, where it's every clothing bag, food bank, and soup kitchen across the county. Where, when money is tight, where can people go? You don't need a food bank card anymore, and that is, that can help. In addition to that, is the Street Guide. And because if people realize, okay, there's, this is what's going on, what are we missing? Something we've learned through our coordinated effort with the Local Homeless Coalition Temporary Shelter while the Salvation Army is closed, there is a dramatic increase in single fathers. So other than St. John's Family Shelter, there isn't an option for them outside of this. So that's kind of exciting that if and when the Salvation Army reopens, maybe we can look at that's a need. But there are six shelters here. They're all a little bit different. We have a robust continuum of care. I'm very proud of it. DHCD uses Washington County as an example because our coordinated entry efforts started when, just as Jody was leaving Reach, so eight years ago. We've worked out kinks. We can always get better and do more. But people need to know, there are six shelters. Are there enough? No, there's never enough resources. We collaborate, as Jill shared. There are drop-in centers. There are places people can choose to go during the day. People can shower every day. Men can shower at the mission. I think it's 10 to 4. They only close during mealtime. Reach's space during the non-shelter season, the homeless can shower and do laundry. There's somewhere you can go every day and get a hot meal, sometimes twice. There's a variety. It's so complicated, and that's why there's so much on here. It's a snapshot. But just helping get that out, so they hear, I mean, look at the wonderful, it's not every, we have more to do. But look at this strong collaboration. So know this is what we have, and then where do, what do we need to do from there?
So, so when you say help, help educate, how do you, like, could you give us, and I, this is important, right? Because it, give us some actual things. Like, do you see that in council closing comments? Do you see it in our social media? Like, how, because you deal with the population every single day. You guys are the experts in your field. So how do you see us from our elected seats helping educate?
So I think this is a fantastic opportunity right now. We were so honored. I don't know if you can have these on our website. Most of us have them on our, our website because they're updated. They're dated. The Hark list and this, but I think having us here and maybe routinely bringing something up. One thing I would love, I know it's probably not this season, how cool would it be to have all of you come and serve dinner one night? You don't have to buy the food. Like, you can use the stuff that we have in the kitchen or freezer. I would love that. Or what if you guys came and the delegates came? In the same night, you can have 10 people in the kitchen. It doesn't have to just be in the kitchen. I think that would be fantastic.
I agree. I enjoy it when I, I was here with the church during Christmas time.
Yeah. Yeah.
The, the guy that you have, the Street Guide here, it's fantastic. I grabbed one last night at the public safety meeting. These, where, where can folks, like, I, I would like to encourage folks to, what's the term, to give smarter, right? To give more wise.
And that's one thing too, and that's a whole nother segment, and don't let me hog it. But, you know, we created together, Chief Brooke Cindy, when she was with, I still turning point. It's like your, your friends that get me are even made me.
I know.
Created to change the way you give. You can give $5, right? They're not going to stand there and starve. So by not giving that way, you change the way you give them. Drive them, to encourage them to get to the soup kitchens where outreach goes, get into the shelters. So these are, these are on Reach's website, under Resources, Hark's website, CAC. I believe emergency management, if you can have them on your website. We post them on the Homeless Coalition Base Camp. I'm happy to forward things. I forward things to Cody. You know, wherever, but both of those guides live on, on all those websites under Resources.
Do you know if that's something that we can put on our website?
That's Wes.
Hey, okay. All right. So I'll email it to you. Wonderful.
We used to have, we had a guy out there, so maybe during the, okay. Yeah, but it's on a, yeah.
Well, and we got smart. There's a couple of things came out of 2020. We got smart and started putting the date on the top because so much changed in the spring to the fall and beyond. So they're dated, Hark and the Street Guide.
I wanted to make sure that everyone got an opportunity to enter councilwoman's.
Yes.
How quickly help each agency.
I will kind of hop on your coattails a little bit, mentioning, I'm not sure if you all are aware of the Local Homeless Coalition, we're aware of the Local Homeless Coalition that we meet quarterly. I was, had a talk with Jeannie the other day, is that out of those meetings, it is such a huge lift to get everyone to the table, but those meetings tend to be very well-attended by many community partners. And they're, they're once a quarter. What I'm thinking that needs to come out of those are action items. What are our top priorities and how can we tackle them? And can the council maybe give us a list of some of the things that you're seeing that are, you know, maybe some of the bigger complaints that you're getting? So we can turn some of these into either working meetings or something that we have coming out of those meetings that all community partners and most community partners are, are at the table. And, and of course, tack on to that. Funding is always good.
Oh, yeah. No, I like that, too.
Don't turn it.
Because the challenge this year has been the closing of the Salvation Army shelter. And it was a great collaborative effort through the Local Homeless Coalition to get the shelter open. It's been open since April, is it April? But funding's going to run out in January, which is the middle of the cold months. And so that is currently five occupied rooms of households that will have no rest to go because there, there are limited beds in this county for shelter. But the Local Homeless Coalition has just been a great way to get information out to community partners about each other, but putting some action behind everyone coming to the table. And what can we, what can we actually start to tackle? Or even continue to tackle as we see issues change and, and, you know, the landscape of what's happening in our county change. Like I mentioned, the food pantry, we are giving out 1,000 bags of food a month. And that's a huge increase from two, three years ago, where we were giving out 300 a month, just showing how much need there is. And so, you know, it's a large tsunami of, of need out there. And so how do we, how do we start to chip away at that and really put some action into what's happening?
Um, do, when's the last time the Resource Guide was updated?
Say that again.
So there is a Resource Guide. It's not as, as fun and easy to hand out as this. It's, it's a booklet, but, but it, yeah, do you know?
2019.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's been a minute.
We need a committee.
So, yeah, we need some people to, to support doing that because there's a lot of resources that have clearly changed since then, dropped and added. And so I think while it's not as ideal to hand out, it's still an excellent resource. And I think we could probably get maybe a little smarter about how it's accessed, and so it can be more online and accessible that way. But I think really promoting where are the resources, not just, you know, soup kitchens and shelter, but also, you know, to get a provider, you know, what, what, how do you get somebody to prescribe you medication if that's something that you need? Or how do you, you know, get into substance use treatment or, you know, whatever the case may be? So really making sure that people know where those resources are and who can help them for different things. Because I function from a slightly different place. We sometimes get homeless people, but, or, or people in need, but we are dealing with them, getting them into services. And then we're going to need a prescriber to give them that, you know, diagnosis, then we got it, you know? And so we're coming from a slightly different place. We, we can always take referrals, though, right? So we want folks to come in so that we can get them established in services and then hopefully avoid some of those other components that, that are a struggle in the community.
Can I jump back in really quick? One thing that did come up in that meeting was 211. Maryland 211 is great for resources, but there's not an easy way to just, I guess you have to call. We threw out an idea of an app. Could there be an app for Hagerstown, Washington County? You just click on the app and find out what resources to go, what do you need to be eligible for the services that you're seeking? And so that was another idea that was thrown out.
Yeah, because it does get confusing. Yes.
So I'm going to take a slightly different approach. You know, I think nonprofits and you all as government are often held accountable for solving a wide variety of issues, and people wonder why we aren't able to make progress on those things, despite all of the, all of these efforts to support individuals. And one of the things that I think I have learned is that we can provide individual supports to folks and help them get so far, and that so far is until they hit the system, which was also brought up last night, in, in the, in the meeting last night, that in some large respect, many of the forces that have folks stuck in some of the cycles they're in are systemic, and they're not necessarily things that without a little bit of bravery and going out on a limb and taking some risks to figure out what are the systemic challenges here and what power, especially as elected officials, do all have to change those in, in various cases. We will, we will be somewhat moderately successful, but we will still be coming back here, you know, pounding our, pounding our heads on the desk saying, what's going, what's going on here? You know, there's, there's, there are examples, I won't waste everybody's time, but there's some, some examples about some of the economic conditions here in Hagerstown, Washington County, that are systemic related, that ultimately end up having folks encounter a lot of the challenges that, that we have right now. I think one of the biggest things we should look at, also collectively, is how hard it actually is to get out of some of the circumstances we're talking about. You know, as I was driving here from Smithsburg today, I was reflecting on the fact that I can get my car and drive anywhere I want to at any point in time during the day. I can go to the doctor's office. I can go to McDonald's. I can do whatever I want to, right? I have that because of privilege and because of a lot of different things. But many of the folks that we're helping, they do not have that, and instead they're beholden to our schedules, our rules, our timelines, our funding, and our things, and we wonder why they have seemed to have a different experience than we do, right? And why this is so hard for folks to seemingly want to get out of the position that they're in. Well, part of it is because the rules oftentimes, and the, and the systems often make it impossible to do that. So I think that would be the other piece that we should really continue to look at. And while I think we've made progress here, I think there's still a long way to go about how we might still be able to, how we might be able to streamline those things and recognize that, among other things, just as an example, having to rely on public transit for all of your transportation needs is a little counter to the example, I just said I can get my car and go whatever time I want to, right? The two things don't necessarily add up, so we wonder why it's so much harder, or it seems to be so much harder.
Thank you.
I agree. And I agree in so many ways. You can have all of the services. You can have all of the things. You can have great people working there. But when people meet that thing, whatever it is, whether it's, whether it's support, whether it's transportation, or whatever it is, then they, they end up back into the same situation. And so I do agree. I think that for, for, for me, I think that conflict resolution has to be a part of different agencies. And the reason why is because if someone comes in and they have an issue, it's just like with church or with your house of the faith. If they have an issue with you, now it's Reach has done this. Reach won't allow. You know, if there's someone that has an issue with police, it's the same within the government side, within it. Then it's the police won't versus that one specific personality issue. If someone doesn't like me, I'm not doing conflict resolution because, or the city, right? Matt upset someone, council member, I'm sorry, Schindler upset someone. Now it's, the city is against me. And so I, I agree that the systematic things are in place, but then I also believe that conflict resolution and being able to help folks be able to understand how to address their individual conflicts, and then also agencies having that in place. Because if I have an issue with Teresa and I can't get beyond Teresa, now my issue is not with all of the services. My issue is with whoever oversees me, being able to get my conflict done with, you know, taken care of with Teresa. And I won't feel, and I know this because it's a family thing, and my mom won't mind me sharing this, right? But I know she won't. But my mom has, may have had personal issues with specific people that kept her in a cycle of shame, of guilt, of not walking into a place because she went to high school with someone and they treated her wrong. And I believe that that is one of the biggest things that we have here in, in Washington County. If I know you, you know me, those types of things. So I just wanted to throw that out there from my, my mediator brain outside of the mayor.
I like that. One thing, too, it could be a different day. In 2020, right before the real, the 2020 that we all think of, there was an initiative to look at the tax sale that was beyond the value of the property and perhaps foregoing the taxes. I'm probably doing a poor job explaining this. So is that something that we can revisit that could help maybe Habitat for Humanity or CAC or the different agencies that do housing?
That's actually.
However, that works. Okay, great. So I didn't, okay, yeah. I feel like that's not necessarily. My mom intuition. But I mean, that was an exciting, and then, of course, you know, we tried to do it by Zoom a couple of times, but I feel like that could be, it's not one answer. It's not one size fits all.
Stick around. It's right after you. So stick around.
Did everybody get a turn to ask? Do you feel like we answered your question?
Oh, yeah.
I get off on a chance.
Thank you.
So.
Did, did either of you have something?
First, also thank you for being here. Thank you for helping not only those of us here at the table, but everybody watching at home, streaming, whatever they're doing, to understand more of what you do, which I think is very important. I'm going to be a little bit more direct because of why you're here. You're here because Senator Quarterman sent a letter to this mayor and council in late July. And I'm going to quote, quote two sections from his letter. These are Senator Quarterman's words, quote. These are Senator Quarterman's words, quote, he, and, and I should say, he's telling the mayor and council what we should do. Okay? Just keep that in mind. Quote, "And enabling and exacerbating, exacerbating the plethora of social services continuing to expand in the core of the city." And then he goes on to say, "Simply put, change zoning in the core of the city to focus on positive business development." In other words, and that's an end quote, in other words, in my opinion, he's saying, "Let's just get rid of everybody that appears to be a problem." Another section, section seven, he says, quote, "Reevaluate the city's financial support to nonprofit organizations," that's you, "whose business model thrives on the continued degradation of our community." There are, there are areas of our city that have become overrun by individuals who clearly have no desire to better themselves or contribute positively to our society. Yet these nonprofits continue to cater and attract this very element that is creating disorder throughout the community." End quote. These are the words of our state senator to the mayor and council. Now, the particular issue with that point, that second point was he is implying that all of you are fully funded by the city of Hagerstown. Which we all know, and I think anybody that doesn't live under a rock understands that that is not the case. I know that there is some funding, and correct me if I'm wrong on, on this, but for example, with REACH, I know the program that you mentioned, the Bridge to Change Program is partially funded by, by the city because it's a creature of the city. It was created by concept that came out of the council to, you know, last administration. The, um, I know that there are pass through grant opportunities that the city facilitates. For example, C D B G, the money that are, are federal funds but passed through the city because that's the way it's structured to your organizations and others and so forth. So it's, it's definitely a false premise for the senator to be implying that first of all, that you all and every other nonprofit is fully funded by the city of Hagerstown and that the mayor and council should knock it off. And secondly, it's inappropriate, in my opinion, and I'm assuming in yours, that it's implied here that if you all just went away, so would all of the other problems. So that's why you're here. Okay? It's important for folks to understand the work that you're doing and why you're doing. Because clearly there are people, including the senator, who do not understand. They, that, that do not understand the ramifications of taking an entire population and ignoring them. Okay? And look, I know that nothing's perfect. There are no programs that are perfect. There are no solutions that are perfect. It's, it's, I think it was mentioned, it's an ongoing challenge. The populations are different. There are, as, as again, someone mentioned, you have to meet people where they are. Each, almost each individual, right? And to say that basically the nonprofit and social services organizations, not only in Hagerstown and not only in Washington County, not only in Maryland, but across this nation are contributing to the problem is foolish, in my opinion. I think that it would be inherent upon us, and I really appreciated Councilwoman Burnett's first question. Which is, I think, indicative of the way that this mayor and council, and I don't wanna speak for everybody, but from my perspective, the way this mayor and council looks at all of these issues, how can we help? What can we do? Okay? And that's important. And it's limited, you know? We have limited resources. We have limited opportunities. But there are things that we can do. I would also point back to the senator and say, Senator, what are you doing? To help? This letter does not help. The meeting that was held that Mr. Schuster referred to last night did not help. There was not one tangible solution that I heard standing there for two and a half hours that came from any of the speakers. Some of the speakers were very complimentary of the programs that are happening. One of the first speakers was a gentleman that's in recovery and trying to get his life back on track. There were speakers, uh, of people who live in the city and spoke well of, of, of the city of Hagerstown. There were people who worked for the city and stood up and said, hey, you're wrong. Okay? But the plethora, using this Congress, the senator's term, that the plethora of comments were, here are all the problems. Period. I'm gonna get up and walk away now. Not any solutions. So we're looking for solutions. As you may know, because of the context of this letter, we've had sitting in the seats where you're sitting, the Washington County Health Department to describe and, and, and articulate the, um, the programs that they have. We've had the state's attorney. We had the chief judge of the circuit court. We've had all of the levels of law enforcement that the citizens of Hagerstown have, including Hagerstown Police Department, the Washington County Sheriff's Department. Because yes, we are in Washington County. We are residents of Washington County and the Maryland State Police. We've had these different groups and these different individuals come and speak for the same reason that you're here. Because it was implied in this letter, maybe even more than implied, implied in this letter, that this mayor and council are the reason that anybody has any problem. And I take offense to them. And I was hoping that last night's meeting, which was entitled potential solutions. And when I started taking my notes, I titled my notes, "Solutions" and underlined it. And at the end of the night, my pad was still empty. So I appreciate the fact that you're here, bringing potential solutions and real solutions to this community, for the people of this community. And I appreciate Councilwoman Burnett's approach to how can we help? That's what I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that, that's, that's amazing. That you've wrapped all of that up into that because that is the absolute reason why you're here. And we do say, you know, he wrote the letter, but at the end of the day, that's why I asked for more, like, give us more. When you say help educate, what does that look like for this elected body, right? And that's why I asked that specific thing because if we don't walk away with some action items of how we help educate, then my way of educating is doing it the same way that I do it, right? But I haven't, you haven't given me and I, you know, something that I could come and do. And so that's why I wanted it to be kind of specific because it, it looks different. All of us work, we're elected. We all work, you know, different with the elected body, appointed, you know, some of us appointed, whatever. But, um, because that's important. Don't let anybody say, she's not elected, she's appointed. It's important that we know what, how we can help in our roles outside of being part of the elected body. But what does it look like as the elected body? What could we do to help along with the staff that we have? And so thank you for that, council member, because that is important. You can talk solutions all day and not give anyone actual action items. And when you come up with a plan, that's the thing that we go through. Okay, who's gonna do that? And how is that gonna get done? Right? Okay, you want council to help educate. Okay, who's gonna do it? How's it gonna get done and what does it look like? But thank you for that point.
Can I make a comment to the, the point that was raised there? Hopefully on behalf of, behalf of my colleagues. So one of the things that concerned me about that is the somewhat myopic generalization of all nonprofits into one category. Right? Because the reality is, then that's great. The humane society is also contributing to this problem somehow. Right? So that's, the, the first thing is we have to be very careful about that. This actually comes to a solution, believe it or not, in, in one second when I get there. But I, I, I would imagine everybody else probably had similar concern when we read that. We're like, who are you even talking about? Right? Now, what I, what I think, where I think that comes from, listening to the conversation last night, which I had to listen to over my morning coffee today because I couldn't be there last night. It's interesting to me, what we often, what to, want to do is oversimplify the issue to one key point, right? Jeannie made the point earlier that homelessness is complicated. And that's absolutely true, right? For every, for every person who's homeless, there's a set of circumstances that got them there. And for every single person, those are different. Right? But we tend in, in meetings like that and in places where we have the mic especially, to want to oversimplify the issue to, into something that, that we can say. So that's one of those pieces that I would suggest we need to be, everybody needs to be very careful about. And one of the things that I think we run into a lot with that is, is, you know, some examples that folks use, right? And I did hear an undercurrent of this last night, so I'm gonna lift it up as a thing that we could, that I think we can all work towards, towards being better at. And it is that, you know, or every person who is able to overcome adversity, overcome addiction, overcome whatever, and stand up in front of a room and demonstrate that they are now, you know, that they are now in recovery, they're a contributor to society, that immediately propagates the belief, well, if they can do it, everybody will be able to do that. Right? Just like for every person that you see on the street still that doesn't do that, that looks like they're in, that they're currently actively using and that they're, they're in, you know, they're, they're unhoused and they're experiencing the circumstances, the natural indication is to say, well, they don't want help. They'll never be helpful. They'll never be helpful. Right? So we tend, we tend to want to categorize folks into these groups when honestly, I don't think anybody would agree that that's ever true. But it is a very, it is a very big risk, particularly from, you know, a leadership standpoint that we run. And so I just wanted to, that, that's what, that kind of stuck in my mind is, is Councilman Perini was speaking. But that's, that's a big concern in listening to language like that anywhere. And so it's, so from a solution standpoint, I think we need to continue to be mindful and careful about how we try to categorize, how to categorize people and how we have these conversations.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, language is important.
Well, I, I've known, um, I have family and friends that have visited each and every single one of your agencies. And they have spoken highly of you guys. And for me, I am grateful for the services you provide because without it, I just can't even imagine what that would look like. And you guys do the work every single day. So I appreciate again you guys coming to provide more insight on what that is that you do because a lot of people just don't know and think that we don't have that. We have six shelters, but they think we only have one or, or, or none. Some people say none, or why I'm saying better be a shelter, but whatever. Okay, just, just thank you.
So I had a couple of things. First, um, thank you guys all for being here. It's extremely, extremely helpful. And like you said, the awareness, getting that awareness out. You know, this is what we're kind of here for, in my opinion. I mean, we do what we do. You guys do what you do. We, we know the same thing. One thing that I've been hearing recently that frustrates me is I've heard multiple people coin, use the term or something along the ways of fixing addiction and fixing homelessness. And you, you can't fix those things. And I, I think everyone here would agree with that. You know, we can treat it. We can work towards prevention. We can help. You can't fix an addiction. You can't fix homelessness. So I appreciate you guys. And we, we can't fix it. There's never not going to be a need for the services that you guys provide. So thank you for that. The, the one thing I, I do hear a lot, and it's insinuated in the senator's letter, is that the amount of services that we have in the city of Hagerstown are attracting folks that need services. It's like a moth to the flame type of, type of an idea. And I'd be curious of your thoughts on that. Because we hear it a lot. We hear it a lot. Well, Hagerstown has so many services. People come to Hagerstown to get services. That's a big misconception out there, I think. But I'd like to hear it from, from the experts because I, I don't feel that way. But I'd be curious if any of you have thoughts on that.
One quick thing to say. It's, it's very small because we have, ours is a little more closed door at times, but I am not allowed to increase or create new programs without proving that the need is there first. And I have to do all of my research and all of my data collection before I can even propose the idea of increasing or creating a new service within my organization. And that is months or even years of data to prove that I can support financially creating that service. So if that helps.
Wouldn't it said, well, I have to, the need has to be there before the money is there.
Before I can do anything about it.
And what we hear, that we should be making data-based decisions. And that's exactly what you're doing. So.
No, I was just gonna say, the majority of the people that come through our shelter have lived in this area. They've lost their job, they're, they've lost that resources from their family because of their addiction. We, if they are not from here or they have family elsewhere, we try to help them get back there. Like if you have family somewhere that's willing to help you out and take you back, let's get you back there. Like our goal is not to keep you somewhere where you don't have resources or you're not gonna get the help. We seek to get them back to where they're gonna do the best.
Would you guys pay for that? Or do you have resources that you kind of tap into in order to do that? So you have someone that has worked somewhere? Or do you help facilitate that?
We can help facilitate that, depending on the funding and we can work things out. Doesn't always work, but sometimes it does.
Thank you.
And then, I'm sorry.
So two observations. Number one, I didn't know you were gonna ask this question, so I didn't bring the data, but there are any number of national level studies that, that debunk the myth particularly that homelessness is transient. Right? Majority of individuals, as you just said, who are homeless in a given community are from that community originally. They are there, they do not move across the country just to where things look better. You know, it's, that's not, that's not how it works. I suspect this again may be one of those, we heard about this one person that one time, and so that sticks. Right? Um, I, I, a corollary to this, I know, and I'm not as well versed in this, but I, but I, I believe I have this correct, is, you know, we do have several state correction institutions in, in, in our county as well. And I believe there is also some presumption that there are individuals who were, who were sent there from other parts of the state who theoretically are being released here, right? And are now becoming part of our problem for various reasons. And while there is, there is some small truth to that, it is not nearly to the, to the numbers that folks assert. Because the reality is everybody has to have a home plan, pre-release, right? So they have a plan with their pre-release caseworker about where they're gonna go, what supports they're supposed to have, where, and how that's all gonna work. It can be possible that that plan is to be released to an agency or program that is here in Washington County. I'm not gonna, not gonna deny that. But again, most folks go back to what they know and where they came, where they were from originally. They don't decide to just transplant here necessarily.
Can you share that? Sorry, it's right there. Can you share that data, data? Email the body?
I can, I can, I can, I can track that down. Thank you.
I was just gonna say the state prisons facilitate, um, the, the partnerships and things that come in with state agencies help facilitate that. And that's always, I know that's some language that is constantly used. I was just in a room the other day where I said, you know, I think that they're back to, they're back to, uh, releasing, um, everyone from the state back into Hagerstown. And again, there was a, I corrected it because I'm part of a team that goes in and help people make a plan about living, uh, what their life's gonna be like. And so the state does help facilitate people to get back to their community. Now, there are some folks that are part of our community. They come here, they set up life here. But for the majority, that is the case and that's facilitated through the state.
And I have one other thing I wanted to, to ask you guys about. Again, stemming from what we're trying to address and, and to, to just talk about it. And that's, um, the, the idea of being geographically diverse with where we're putting our services. Whether that be the county. Um, in this instance, it's talking about downtown Hagerstown, right? Should the services be geographically located in downtown Hagerstown? What are the obstacles of having them not in downtown Hagerstown? Um, I mean, I know, you know, we've had mention of Shepherd Pratt with the mobile crisis unit and things like that, which is going to the different schools and going out of the area, which, um, I understand that. But do you guys have any thoughts on that as far as? I, I think as Councilmember Perini said, I think the, the sentiment is that also As far as, I, I think, as Councilmember Perini said, I think the, the sentiment is that all services should be pushed out of the city. And, you know, everything would be hunk of dories, but I, I don't know that it works that way. And I'd just be curious if you guys had any thoughts on that.
I think the number one handicap is transportation. So if you push a social service outside of the city, a majority of the clients are, are city-based. And therefore, because our transit doesn't go far outside of the city, or, or at all in some cases, you would be severely handicapping those who are, are at need.
When you say transit, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, nope, I'm sorry. When you say transit, what do you mean?
Washington County commuter, yes.
So, in, in that instance, I, I'm gonna try to paraphrase what I think you're saying, is that the folks would still be where they are, they just wouldn't have access to service.
That is correct.
And I think our, our services are unique enough that it's not like you can say, okay, this half of the table, you guys go over in Smithsburg area. This half of the table, you guys go over there, and then we'll spread out, and then we'll be all spread out. But we all offer very different things. So you can't do that and then equally serve any population wherever we might be.
Thank you. I think what you have to add to that is, you know, there's no denying that there is need across the county, right? But the challenge, the challenge with resource allocation, and I think we all would agree with this, is that it's a, the best use of resources to go where the need is greatest, right? It saves everybody time, trouble, and effort, and so that is typically why you want to find that. You know, I mean, the reality is, I, I shared earlier, I live in Smithsburg. Well, when the Smithsburg Police Department encounters somebody who appears to be homeless in Smithsburg, I, I don't know if they call anybody else, because the chief of police out there happens to have my phone number, he calls me about it and says, hey, can, can you, can somebody come on here and look? Usually, because we don't, we don't provide service in Smithsburg, we refer them to somebody else who can, but because he knows me, you know, I mean, that's, that's sort of how that works. Because out in, out in a community like Smithsburg, for instance, I believe to this day, I'm correct, to say that there's really one nonprofit which is established at this table, but that's it, who actually physically operates in Smithsburg on a regular basis, so. You know, but I think that is, you're exactly right, the folks are still gonna be here, even if the services aren't, which then creates that problem I was talking about earlier about, how do you navigate, right? I mean, you all said it beautifully.
And also too, and more so for me, but some of the other organizations more like mine that provide some of the supported housing type, and mobile treatment-type services. We, our, our offices might be located in a downtown area, but we go through the ends of the county, you know, and are serving everyone all the way out to Hancock, you know? So, it's not that, just because that's our home base for our staff, it's not that that's necessarily just where our clients are located.
Y'all might recall, we had a ribbon cutting on a mobile resource van. Is important. Not everybody who even lives within the city can get the resources within the city, to be, to be absolutely clear.
I was just gonna add, so we offer crisis services, like Jeannie had mentioned, so we help with eviction prevention, utilities, whatnot. So, we try to work with the clients, so if they're in Hancock, or they're an elderly person living in Williamsport, we're gonna do what we can with them over the phone, so even though, you know, we're stationed here, we're able to help people where they're at, no matter where they are in the county, at least for that type of service that we provide.
So, I feel like you guys have all given me so many things I wanna touch on, but I wanna keep this flow going. And we need to remember free will. And what I mean by that, I'm gonna use an example from today. What I mean by that is, you can put someone in a house and give them food. You could put someone in permanent supportive, and this happens, like, what we're talking about, it's not, it's not stale, like, it's constant movement. Sixty-seven people, Jill and Bridget housed sixty-seven people last fiscal year, sixty-nine the year before. That's just us, collectively hundreds, okay, there's constant movement. Someone gets in permanent supportive housing. The only rules, you can't have someone here after ten PM and can't do drugs in the building. It's not payment, it's not being mentally ill, those are the two rules to live here. And when you have a young lady sells her key to get high and violates that rule, she's back on the street. There's a woman today that has been through every program, every permanent supportive housing, she is not young. I don't know how old she is, because city miles, you know? She's older, been through every single program. She's in the local homeless coalition shelter, you can't bring people to stay with you. So she was evicted today because she took people to live with her. So, these are low-barrier housing, we, we like those words, right? This is low barrier, these are the only rules for you to be safe in this place, and you can't follow those rules. This past shelter season, we had two hundred and nineteen individuals, eighteen to seventy-six years old. The majority of the people in the shelter this year were elderly or disabled. Why were the elderly and disabled at Reach? Again, those aren't the faces you're seeing in the doorstep. Well, hoarding, it's the number-one call for adult protective services at DSS. So you're at the towers, you're in permanent housing for your age, your group, and the hoarding was so bad that you jeopardized the building and you're evicted. Another lady, she brought her granddaughter to live with her, very sad circumstances. Your lease says to live here in this permanent housing, you can't have people live with you. She chose to do that. So when you, when I say free will, these are real examples from this year that we've dealt with. What do you do with that? We have about fifteen to twenty individuals that we see every day doing drugs, prostitution, we hear about these same fifteen-ish people. Are they really homeless? Like, they're, they don't even come in to go to the bathroom or take a shower, and this is, hey, do you wanna come in? Do you wanna come in and take a shower? They're not interested in services. So the people we're seeing, and you're seeing, that are, it's very upsetting, it makes us mad too. We're constantly on the speakerphone, you need to move on. Our friends at HPD come, look, we're seeing a drug deal, they come and move them on. What do you do with that? You know, and I know we're all upset and people feel helpless, so they're pointing fingers and mad. But that's free will. Those are not people that are here for services. They're not here because of the nonprofit. So what do we do with that? And Alicia works her magic. Harm reduction tries to go, but if someone is not ready for change, so I gave you an example, you put them in a house, you give them this, 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 wraparound services. So I want us to keep that in mind. I wanna give you a snapshot and I'm gonna send it, because Mark Sewell for the Homeless Coalition, we have a coordinated entry, three hundred and five people on that list, by name. Fifty-one percent are women. Twenty-one percent are elderly. So I bring these up to you, and I think thirty-one was mental illness. I bring this up to you because that's not the fifteen people we all see driving down Prospect that are, that are, don't want services. Those aren't clients that are, that want anything. They're not clients.
Thank you for sharing that, because I think that that's important. I think that that's an important piece of information that a lot of folks, we just, as, as Dave said, you know, the language, we just put everyone into the same, you know, category. And I think that that's important to know, that there are some folks that, that they need to be accountable, because they refuse to be accountable. And so when I say that, I mean, like, if you have a home, and you have somewhere to go, and you broke the rules, or you broke the law, or you did something, you have to be accountable to that decision. If you're not taking your medicine, and that's how you got into this, that's accountability. Like, you have to go back through your, so I think that that's important too, that folks understand that, that it's not the same, it's not the people that we see out on the streets. Some of those folks just do not want to be accountable to anything or to anyone. And when I got into this work eight years ago, you couldn't have convinced me of that, because all I had was, you know, my tunnel vision and my, what, what I knew to be true. But after talking with people and spending so much time, gatekeepers, and in those rooms where you see the same ninety people every Saturday morning, those people want change, those people want services, they want to be accountable. They wanna get, you know, active and involved in their life back. And then you run into some folks that, you know, they have every excuse, there's nothing here, there's no, have you been to Goodwill? No, have you been to, no, have you, so, yeah, that's a, that's an important piece of information, thank you for that.
And I think at a time where we all feel helpless, it's frustrating. I mean, I'm grateful I have it, but it's very frustrating. But I think it's important for all of us to remember that some of it is out of our control. Are there things we can do? Yes, be safe, do this. My team, if they get there and they don't feel safe to go in the building, they call HPD, we got guidance on that. There's things we can do, but there's things that are out of our control. So I just think that's important for all of us to remember.
There was a comment made last night related to immigration. The influx of illegal immigrants are taking up an inordinate number of the services that are, that are available and taking away housing from non-immigrants that would otherwise have had access to that, to, to those services. Are you seeing in your respective organizations an increase in the immigrant population over the last four, five years? And is there any validity to that statement?
We have, we have seen a few in our shelter. Not a lot, I would say a handful. I don't have that exact data. They're, unfortunately, if they're not, if they don't have the proper documents, they're not going to get housed. So they're not, it's gonna be taking up housing from somebody else. There, it's very difficult, very difficult to work with these folks, just because we sometimes don't have the capacity to be able to, to help them with the intense amount of assistance that they need.
Our, our state and federal guidelines for the most, all grants have, have to, or do require documentation, so they have to be documented citizens.
And I've actually reached out several times this past year from the Hark to try to get them, you know, linked with the church, maybe that would be more helpful to them, and have more resources than we would.
More questions?
I, I have something I wanna say, but it can be kind of during the transition, so it's not directly to our panel. I know we have like three minutes before.
Really, three minutes?
Do you guys have, I'm sorry.
So one thing I just wanna say is, when I read the letter, I did not interpret to get rid of nonprofits. I read to limit expanding additional programs, so that's how I interpreted that, is why I wanna say that. The other thing is, we do get CDBG for bridge-to-change. So that is personally only for Reach, the only funding we get from the city for the last thirteen years, I would say, so I just wanna clarify that. As far as solutions, to be fair, if I had two more minutes, and Taysha said, you should just do it anyway, but I wanted to be respectful, I do feel like they did try to ask a couple times for solutions. There's big ideas we can do, there's things we can do collectively, this is a very special community, I absolutely love it here. We're small enough, and Chief has said something, like, we're small enough to resolve issues. But some solutions that I wanted to share last night. Share these resources, because if people already know what's going on, then, then we could, what else, what do we truly need? Volunteer your time, right? They're going out a thousand bags at any of the soup kitchens, Parks, Life, Lighthouse. Help these kids, like I tell our, Addie and Artie, if her, their programs are successful, their kid, they're not gonna need us. Volunteer whatever you, Humane Society, Reach, the shelter, we can't run, there's twelve hundred unduplicated volunteers. Whatever you're most passionate about, share your time and energy, that's something a lot of people can do. Support the businesses and the restaurants. I love to eat out, going out with my friends, my favorite thing, Washington County Playhouse. I do that now that we're, you know, all of our babies have gone to college. Those are things that everybody can do, and that's small, it's not gonna change everything, but those were three things I thought of last night that we can all do. So, 'cause you said about solutions, I'm so excited about the tax sale thing. So that's just a couple of things I wanted to say, but.
No, I agree, I mean, I think it's, I think, especially, I agree with all of them, but especially your last point, because the more jobs we can create, the more that our folks can have a job to go and earn money, and to get actual housing on their own, potentially, and that's a lot of the work that we do, is trying to help folks become as independent as possible, and, and then contribute to society, so.
I also got more, more data to that point, which I can also send this, this study. The number-one predictor of homelessness is, is the lack of affordable housing in a community. It's not any of the other factors that you would think, it's not substance use, it's not mental, it's not mental health challenges, it's lack of affordable housing in the first place. Corollary to that, lack of jobs that pay for the housing at the cost that it is at that point in time, is a confounding factor as well. So you got the two factors there, that are well beyond the purview of anybody in social services to change. We are not, for the most part, economic development agencies, among other things. So that's another one of those levers to just consider how those choices play all the way down to the folks that we work, that we work with.
Thank you, yeah, I agree. You guys have anything else? Anybody have anything else? Thank you so much. I thank you for all that you do, and I definitely will be sending a message to see what would be, I don't know if, if you guys are interested, but I would like to do something, maybe we come in and learn about the Reach and serve, so. I'll send out something, including counseling, and see if we can get that on there. And it may be that we could do that with all of the agencies, just come through and be able to see how we could serve and see how we can help. And I agree with the support in downtown businesses and all over businesses, because, yeah, it's very important. And I, I also agree that all of us have to all support each other in all things and things, so. Thank you, and look forward to working with you.
Next week is a five-thirty start with a work session. It will be representatives from juvenile services, social services, parole and probation, and child protective services will be here for you.
Some agenda things right there, some good things coming up, my guys might wanna stick around.
So, Madam Mayor, while we're transitioning here, folks are leaving the table. I just wanna take thirty seconds, since the meeting last night was mentioned several times. There's, there's a lot, there was a lot of misinformation in that meeting, and we could take the next hour to correct all that. But there's one in particular, and we're gonna talk about this a little bit later in the agenda today as well. Over and over and over again, people referring to, including Derek Harvey, were referring to the fact that the city is defunding the police, that is not true. That is absolutely not true. The police department budget is fully funded, number one. Number two, for the time that I've been here, both fiscal year 2024 and fiscal year 2025, those amounts have increased, and I've looked back over the last five years, and it increased every year. So, I just wanted to put that out there while people are still listening and paying attention, that that particular statement is just not true. And anybody that is saying it is either totally ignorant that, to the, to our budget, or is saying it for nefarious reasons, and they know they're not, that it's not true. Thank you.
Taxile Properties update after taxile. Paul Ball, Neighborhood Services Manager, and Amanda Gregg, Business Community Development Finance Specialist, and Sue Kyler, Project and Program Coordinator. You mean, I just read all of Amanda's stuff, and Amanda is not here?
Amanda is not here.
That is not, I just read all of them.
It is just for fun and practice, and it's there. Since we had a segue from the last discussion into this discussion, basically, here. So it's kind of providing the council with an update. So, you know, we approached this administration around this time last year to ask to withhold some properties from tax sale, and we did. And through the process with, working with the county commissioners and the county treasurer, through some challenges, we have able to obtain the twenty-three tax certificates that we requested from them. So what does that actually mean now, now that we've gotten the tax certificates? So it's the next step of the process, because we don't own the properties. It just basically means that we have the tax certificate, and we will have to make the owners of the properties aware. Now, some of these owners have passed away, so it's basically making an estate aware that we have the tax certificate, and if we do not hear from them, we will move forward with getting title to the properties through the court system. It's a, it's a tax sale process, it's been in Maryland for decades on a way to acquire properties. It's just the recent legislation at the state level has allowed local jurisdictions to be able to start to move forward with this. So of the twenty-three properties that we selected, eighteen of them are vacant lots. Pretty much all of them are undeveloped land, meaning that we can't really do anything with them. They won't meet any current zoning or requirements to build a structural on there. So the process with those is reaching out to the neighboring properties to see if they were interested in acquiring those parcels. The city would work with them on redrawing plat lines, to remove lot lines, to add that into their. The city would work with them on, uh, redrawing plat lines to, uh, remove lot lines to add that into their, um, boundaries of it. We've worked with Estet, um, on the tax assets value to that, to do something along those lines. It doesn't increase the taxed assets value of the person's home. It's just that they have more land with their property. Some of these parcels are very, very tiny, so it's not like they're acquiring acres of land. It is, uh, something that's a few thousand square feet. Uh, and honesty, some neighbors have already been mowing and maintaining them for years. Um, they've been basically helping us out, uh, with that, uh, main maintenance of it. Uh, there are five properties that of the 23 that have structures on them. Uh, we have identified, uh, definitely three of them that, uh, will most likely need to be demolished. Two have a potential for rehabilitation. That doesn't mean that the city would rehabilitate them. That means that, uh, we would seek out, uh, nonprofit organizations such as those that spoke here tonight, um, to potentially either rehab those, uh, or, uh, if we, if there aren't any interest in through any of our nonprofits that look for affordable housing, that we would move forward with any type of private investors that may be interested in renovating those. If, uh, there's no, um, movement on those that we are saying that have the marginal chance to be rehabilitated, then, um, we would look to demolish those because there is, um, that's where we're at. It's at the, it's at the cusp of either being salvaged or demolished. Uh, someone might actually want to take that on. One of the challenges that we've always faced with this is that, uh, the city doesn't own the properties. Uh, so when we don't own them, when we have an interest party such as a nonprofit that might want to actually acquire the property, we can't take them in them. They don't own it. Uh, so they're basically trying to look to acquire a property sight unseen, although they can see it from the outside. Some from photos that maybe we have taken on the inside, uh, but they couldn't actually be in the property. So this is all part of the process so that we can actually move some of these properties in other people's hands. They get them back on the tax rolls, um, for the city because these are cyclical tax sale properties, meaning it goes to tax sale pretty much every year for the last several years. No one's interested in the properties whatsoever. And as I said, some property owners are deceased, so they're just not, um, even, you know, no family's interest in that property. Uh, so when is the date that we can actually start moving forward with getting these titles? Cause I'm sure you might be curious about that. Uh, so that's all in the tax certificates that we obtained. Uh, the date on those would is March 4th, 2025, because we have to wait six months. So that's from the date that we received the certificate and, uh, we're waiting on that. Once we, uh, get past that wait time period, we will be making the owners aware, uh, per the state law, uh, that we are going to look to get title to the properties. And once that notification's been made, then we can file in court. So that's just an update, a little bit on that. Um, some of the next steps that you all, um, uh, may, may see in front of you. I say may because, um, we will be bringing back in December. So, um, for those of you that will be here in the next administration, we'll be bringing back in December, some amendments to chapter 224 of the city code. Uh, that is the code that gives us the authorization to do the process that we're talking to hear to you about tonight. That's actually going to try to, uh, navigate through what we've been doing right now. Uh, since it wasn't until, I want to say 2021, the state legislation gave us the authorization to do this. We've kind of had to work our way through it, but now we figured out a process. Now we need to refine our code to address some of these, um, hurdles that we may have established for ourselves through our own ordinance to be able to eliminate those hurdles. And then of one of the things that we wanted to ask, uh, the body here from tonight is that, uh, each year we have to go through and basically identify which properties we might need for the next year. Uh, so we're moving forward with this. And like I said, that was in the 2023 tax sale. We are here in the fall of 2024 and we just now got the tax certificates. Uh, so this is a long process to go through those. So we have, um, six properties that, uh, we're looking to withhold and, and, uh, PCAD identifies all of these properties as we actually do, um, a lot of the, um, maintenance of them. So we know which ones are the ones that are, are blighted to go to Councilman Schindler's, uh, concerns with properties in town. And then, uh, DCD, uh, joined us on all of our inspections and site visits to, to evaluate them and, and alternative to sue for what the next six that we're looking at.
So the four of these, um, two, the 237 Winter, 204 Devonshire and the two Wakefield, 319 and 323, those structures can all have potential to be rehabbed. Myself and Amanda had went in with Paul and some of the inspectors to go through them. They need cleaned out. They're filled with items and belongings through the years. And I actually, when I was in code, I think I condemned all four of these years ago. So those are going to be, um, yeah, just cleaned out and sold as is. 316 Liberty Street, that one, uh, has major structural issues and the plan there is to demo that one. And 148 West North was the property, um, with multiple garages on it and that's completely down now, right?
You'll approve that emergency demolition and it is down now. I think final inspections will be this week, but it is gone.
316 Liberty is, is a, is a single family.
It's a single family home that's one story, um, probably a very old home in there. It was built on a stone, stones, basically. I mean, it is collapsing down on itself. When you walk in and it just slopes down all of a sudden, it's a very.
But it would be on a developable lot.
Correct.
Once it's demoed. So something could go back up there.
It is a very big parcel. That lot is very large on Liberty Street.
Jeannie, did you hear that?
So like Sue said there, that, that we took the expertise from DCD on these, uh, site visits so that we could determine which ones, you know, based on their experience of, of using CDBG funds to renovate properties that we could actually, uh, maybe salvage, like not our part, but as far as not just demolish. Um, cause from a code point of view, it is just not meeting code, whereas they would see the potential for renovation. So we work together on that. Uh, so, you know, the, the next steps with us is, you know, with those six properties is the next six that Sue has identified. Do they, um, look good for the council? Like we said, most of these are, are structures. The garages that we mentioned, um, you know, that's a future conversation between, uh, either the city for, um, Wheaton Park expansion or if it's with, uh, Haystack Housing Authority for their expansion into that area too. There's only two abutting properties. Nothing can go back on that parcel because it's an alley property only. It has no street frontage, so it's not permitted to have something else go on it. So we have to decide what we want to do. If it would get incorporated into another parcel, there might be an option for, you know, housing to go on it or something along those lines, but not just as it exists, has to be brought into another one. But with those six, or as, as the council, are we, you know, good, um, with that? If you, if, you know, to let you know that although it's a general, you know, maybe nod now, there'd be a motion in front of you all, um, in October, uh, that would be voted on to, uh, the city and the mayor and council will be certifying that the properties are vacant per state law and that, um, that they're unfit for occupancy. Uh, this will be our certification that the state makes us go through that process.
So, um, a couple of quick questions. In this process, um, does this, does the state law or is there any requirement for a certain number of cycles, uh, tax sale cycles? Uh, other than the last one?
No, no, but we do by our ordinance, uh, we like to see cyclical, meaning three or five years that we like to see.
Okay, okay. And is there any, uh, requirement in the state law regarding the disposition of the properties once the city obtains them through the tax certificate process?
I'm, I'm, if you could just clarify like.
Well, you mentioned, for example, uh, some of the rehab discussions that you made, you suggested, um, that, you know, work with a nonprofit. Are there, is, is, are there requirements that we have from state law?
No.
For that disposition or that's a decision that mayor and council can make?
Correct. That's in our chapter 224 of the city code. That is that, uh, we are to seek out nonprofits that offer affordable housing first before we go to the private side.
That's the question.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for answering that. We get that question a lot. Like, do we have any, as in the we as a body, do we have any say on what goes into property like that? So thank you for answering that. And also, um, the residents, uh, near 148 West North Avenue. I've seen you there a couple of times. I'm there too, listening to them complain about that structure.
Talked to that resident as well.
They are very appreciative because of the activity that was going in that garage was very unsafe. To the point there was like even an apartment in there and some heating devices, um, and some just unfavorable activity. And they are very proud, um, to see, to see. Without that, without that structure there and without, you know, that type of, um, crowd that will be at that structure. And just looking at the, the number of vacant lots, um, I would like one day, if possible, if any of these vacant lots could be turned into, um, a garden, a community garden, especially all of these. Really? What?
Yeah.
Okay. See, is this, I'm repeating myself or something, right?
You've been here so long that they've taken your eye.
We've had community discussions with certain locations, um, as which, um, as you see a couple on Jonathan Street that might have been of your reference to the side by side.
Yep.
With, uh, interest parties and about that, if we would green title to those properties.
Perfect.
We, we've had a lot of conversations on these. This has gone back several administrations, actually.
Two jobs of mine.
Right. I, I don't believe it's anyone sitting at this table right now, other than potentially myself has talked to previous administrations on this one. But, uh, but yeah, it's just, we took state law getting passed and, and then getting everything through. It just took time. But we're, we're getting closer to that process to, to, to change these things.
Hopefully in March of next year, we'll make some progress. So we'll have these conversations again.
This is the furthest we got.
And, and a lot of credit's got to go to Amanda, um, Greg, who couldn't be here tonight for, for that. She, uh, stayed on top of, uh, working with the treasurer's office and their attorneys on making sure that we obtained those tax certificates along with our attorney, uh, to, to get us.
And it took some time because this is new ground and everyone wanted to make sure that eyes were dotted, tears were crossed. We were doing it the right way because we didn't want to get too far down the road than somebody, you know, have. And so I appreciate the work that, that the, the, the county has done, that, that, uh, the, the, the real estate attorney has done and that this group right here has done, um, to, to get us to this point. And, and also, you know, be remiss to not thank Delegate Grossman, Senator Quarterman, who worked on this tax sale legislation with us. And, uh, and were able to get it, get it through, not as stringent as we were hoping or quick as we were hoping it would get done. But, uh, we didn't want to have to wait to six months, but that was a, uh, that was a compromise. We were willing to go, uh, to, to get this moving. So, uh, this is certainly the furthest we've gotten and we keep our fingers crossed that we can keep going and get to March. And we can get some of these properties moved and we can just keep doing this to try to get these parcels back into productive use again, because they are biked. And, uh, we need, and, and nobody here at this table, I know Councilman Alshire and Councilmember McIntyre would have, would have heard us say this a ton of times, that, that is the goal, to get these back into productive use because they are not going anywhere. They are costing the city thousands of dollars in abatement and labor costs to be able to maintain these. And we have got to get them back in productive use and we are that close. So, thank you guys.
Thank you. The big step towards getting some of these vacant blighted properties back into use. So what we'll do is in October, we'll have a motion for the other six to, that we're certifying that these are, are vacant, um, for your all's vote on that one. That'll be the next step you see on this one.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Councilmember, would you, did you have anything?
I was just trying to remember if the.
I'm sorry.
Garden on South Potomac Street is city property or that's private property across investor?
Bester, um, Bester maintains and does that, but I don't know if it's owned.
City, it's city property. And it's all above ground. It is not in-ground garden.
They're all raised.
Always.
Yep.
Do we ever have any?
Yeah, the city can maintain it and, uh, agencies.
Do we ever have any further discussion about the next door piece?
441.
Expanding that? Now that that's kind of.
That, that was in preliminary agenda, um, for 441 South Potomac to, to approve the purchase of that to allow us to do that. That comes next week.
Everything is just coming back.
I like it. I like it.
It's like, yeah, we're, it's all here.
It's all there.
Good. Good.
There's Paul looking like that, right? All right. Nice to have transient housing proposed title change and Paul Paul Neighborhood Services Manager and Ms. Emily McFarland, our Neighborhood Services Coordinator. Hi, Emily.
So, uh, concerns are raised when we've had some, uh, amendments to this ordinance about the term transient, um, house used and its title of this ordinance. Uh, so we worked with, uh, the legal counsel and looked at other jurisdictions to, you know, what could be a, an appropriate name for this ordinance? Cause this ordinance does not just license hotels, it also licenses, you know, motels, bed and breakfast and short-term rentals. So it's anything that has, which you would consider by legal definition, a transient state, uh, hence the title on it. But there were some concerns that were raised, um, and we wanted to, to propose an, an idea for a new title. So we, we worked with legal counsel, researched in other jurisdictions and we came up lodging facilities. So that's re-titling the ordinance, lodging facilities. It's creating two definitions, lodging facility and lodging unit. Uh, just to basically say that's what's inside of the lodging facility. And then there were some grammatical, um, changes that we observed when we were reviewing this with the attorney that we might need to address. Uh, so, uh, that's what we're proposing to you tonight on, uh, on that is, is the term lodging facilities. We didn't change it throughout because transient is used 108 times in the ordinance. That would be a significant amount of, uh, uh, changes in the ordinance. So we are trying to come up with the, the best solution and to address the council's concern, uh, with the term transient and the title.
Excellent.
I like it.
Yeah. People at a glance really know what we're talking about.
And just to provide an update, uh, for you on the, the, you know, the lodging facility, so as we're, we're now calling it, um, that's, I, we are currently meeting, Emily and I are meeting with all of the hotel owners right now as this is coming up to year two, uh, with them, with the ordinances, um, with the inspections. Just a reminder that the tier one hotels, uh, are on a triennial inspection basis, meaning that we inspect them once every three years. Uh, so anyone that, uh, classified as a tier one does not get an inspection this fall, uh, but they still have to close out inspection reports with us. Uh, so they are being reminded of that. We're visiting with all hotels. Uh, now, uh, a lot of the hotels, uh, got their appropriate permits. They need to make any repairs or corrections, uh, to their hotels or may have done some work without permits that they were unaware of that they needed to obtain, but they've, they've gotten those. We're working through those inspections and they are, um, calling us for re-inspections, but we just met with them explaining what items are open. Uh, we explained to them also the changes that was approved by the council most recently, um, with the, um, requiring of the posting of the license, requiring the, um, uh, the, um, housekeeping services are to be provided once a week. Uh, we also are going over with them that you have to have the hearing impaired alarms available at your facility. Some were still surprised by that when we were mentioning it with them and telling them they need to go sign up, telling people they are available. That's a state law. That's, that's not, uh, I mean, we did incorporate into our own laws, but that is a state law. And then we also are, uh, we worked with the fire marshal's office as well and, uh, created the flyer that we had talked about that what cooking appliances are not permitted in, uh, hotel facilities. So we were providing them with copies of those as well, uh, so they can distribute them out. We said that that is a partnership with the city, that this isn't something solely for them to enforce. It has pictures of it, says that it's a prohibited, um, appliance and that, uh, we asked for them when they're doing their housekeeping, providing their housekeeping services, that if they see those types of cooking appliances in the, in the room, to leave that flyer on the appliance. It has our office's phone number on it, uh, to tell them that they need to call us because these are not permitted. So it's a partnership. So it's not putting the hotel as the, as the quote unquote bad guy. It's still leading the city is telling you, you can't have it. So we're doing all of those meetings right now. We have a couple of schedules still this week. We're looking for inspections in October and November to, to start doing those as well again.
Good. I think that some of the, uh, language that was added is very appropriate at the end, you know, clarifying for legal purposes. The changes to the ordinance doesn't reset anything for any, any, uh, also. also, you know, the fact they've changed the title and actually created the definition of lodging facility. Uh, which I think is more comprehensive because it really is a broad range of, you know, everything from what people typ- typically think of like hotel motel. But also uh where you're talking about uh bed and breakfast and other commercial related uh opportunities. But then, and I don't know that I've heard and I've, you know, maybe it's because I, things have not come up while I've been here. But then there's the whole classification of uh, you know, kind of the online services. Airbnb is the typical example that's used. There's BBRO and others. And so as, as this becomes, you know, gets put in place, then I think that discussion is worth having going forward.
It's the way you're all rolling tonight. I'll turn it over to Emily at this point here. So, so Emily, you can go ahead and tell them what we're working on.
Roll today.
Well, we've actually been speaking about that, about the short-term Airbnbs, especially with the bigger projects that are going on in the city. So we've um, we, I guess, hired a um, a third-party contractor. Their name is Granicus. And they will help us identify those short-term rentals. Um, we'll do the work after they identify them. But for the properties that are being used like Airbnbs or VRBOs, um, they can be hard to determine because things like utilities or ownership might not be readily accessible. But to um a company like Granicus, that's what they do. And they can use, they can use their, their set of expertise to identify those kinds of properties. So we can, we can hone in on those and, and know how they're being used and license those as well.
That's great. Is that sort of an um, a company that goes and trolls online through and somehow identifies?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, uh, we actually, um, we were seeking those out after our last council meeting. Um, and uh, our uh department does a lot of ride-alongs with different jurisdictions and we were talking to Granicus. And then we did a ride-along with Annapolis and did uh their hotel inspections with them that they had that day to see how they do and just to see, are we consistent with other jurisdictions? And, you know, we did that ride-along and they use Granicus as theirs to identify down in Annapolis. And I'm sure as you all know, lot down in Annapolis that they are identifying and they were very pleased and happy with the services they provided.
Mr. Administrator, once we get to that point uh with identifying um that particular company, Airbnb, I know is very cooperative with um jurisdictions, including municipalities like Hagerstown, in working on um, you know, not only the regulatory side, but like hotel motel tax side and so forth. So um, these are things that, that we should explore um going forward, you know, after that's all done.
Um, just for your knowledge, during the demonstrations that we had, it was estimated between eighty to a hundred day expect in Hagerstown that are for term rentals. And how many do we have licensed right now, Emily?
A handful.
Okay.
Five or six.
So we're, we're gonna work through that.
You guys have anything else?
If nothing, we'll have it for you next week for the change of the ordinance to be introduced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a creation of private seating area in public square and Mr. Jim Bender, our city engineer. And I seen Mr. Steve Owens. How you doing?
So, good afternoon. Um, I'm here with Steve Owens, who's a managing member of Hagerstown Properties LLC. They are the owner of the building at one North Potomac Street. It's in the northwest quadrant of the public square and uh right now the tenant on the ground floor is the yarn shop. So it's that building that we're talking about. Um, Mr. Owens submitted a request to create a seating area out in the public square uh that would be fenced in. Um, would have a couple of tables, um, chairs, some planters. But it would be reserved for the use by the yarn shop to do demonstrations or other things out there. So I think I'm gonna let Mr. Owens sort of talk about what his idea was or what his vision is, and then I can come back and talk about how this fits or doesn't fit with the city code and some other considerations. Steve?
Yeah, thanks for teeing that up. Um, Steve Owens, Hagerstown Properties. Good evening. Um, yeah, so um, for the last five, six years, I've been investing millions of dollars in Hagerstown and um revitalizing properties. And uh, one of our projects right now is one North Potomac Street where the, the yarn shop relocated to on the city square. And um, as Jim was saying, um, we're, we're interested in supporting small business owners. We're supported, we're, we're interested in um creating uh and not, not, not specifically creating, but creating a sense of place there, but building upon what so much has been going on in, in terms of public investment and other private investment. And um, what we were interested in doing in a nutshell was to create uh like, like Jim was saying, a fenced-in area um which would meet all of the egress requirements and, you know, minimum standards for um, for everything that's been laid out um as we've included in a, in a pretty detailed um uh plan that, that we drew up. Along with some supporting information on the support of um the importance of, of creating spaces like this. I think that the nuance, that the real crux of the nuance is that the existing um
What's it, what cafe ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, ordinance uh i- is basically, I think limits this, correct me if I'm wrong, limits, limits these types of uses to a, a cafe. When I read it as cafe, I swear, I, I just, you know, I think of like that area as like a cafe, not literally like cafe equals must-serve drinks or food or something like that. So that's this, which is why I've, I've put a whole lot of thought into this and, you know, um, just creating a, what I would call cafe seating area to support the yarn store, support the uh, the folks that come to, to the yarn store. There's, I think, data that I may, may have included in there from people that come to visit the yarn store from various other counties, other states nearby. And um, I think that this would help support that. And again, like the nuance is that the ordinance, I think, if, if we've read this correctly, limits the existing ordinance, limits it to um retail establishments that will serve drinks and or food.
Yeah, the, the sidewalk cafe ordinance that was approved by the city council um is pretty clear in saying that it is, if we create a space like this out in the public right of way, that it's for a restaurant or some other business that is serving prepared food in that space. Um, so that, from that standpoint, what Mr. Owens is proposing doesn't really fit into that definition. Although what he's looking to create is gonna look very similar to some of the other sidewalk cafes on South Potomac Street. The other part of the city code that could apply is uh public space can be used by merchants to um put their merchandise out for, on display in front of their store. You know, it can be, can be licensed or used that way. There really isn't anything that I can find and that the city attorney could find in the city code that speaks to a situation like this where we're taking public space basically and sort of coordinating it off and restricting its use to um basically people that are coming to the yarn shop. The, the city council does have the ability to approve that, um, but we just don't have a, a set policy or a set ordinance to, to deal with that situation.
I mean, you guys. I was gonna, I, I read through this and I was looking and I didn't realize um that when I got to like the last par- paragraph, it makes, uh, yeah, the last paragraph, but I didn't realize, I guess I'm thinking the yarn shop, I'm not realizing that it's not a place that serves food and drink. Um, and so when I got to the last paragraph, I was like, oh, that kind of makes sense because if you create it there, then you have the, if the Alexandria House or the professional arts building. But then as I looked, I'm thinking that is still a spot that sells things. And if you see people that are utilizing that service and, I'm sorry, utilizing the business and then doing the actual thing in front of the business, that is, I mean, it's not literally eating, but it is still, you know, in conjunction with the business. So I just, yeah, I think that it's amazing.
Jim, I have a question for you. So um, I'm a, let's get to a yes with considerations, right? But what, what would we need to do in an instance like this to make sure that we don't set ourselves up for a you know, trip later? Um, like, so would we need to put a provision in ordinance that would modify it to say something like special exceptions can be granted to retail businesses for a cafe like this, or what would be the proper vehicle to do something like this?
That's a good question. Um, I had some preliminary discussions with Jason Morton about this, trying to figure out. I mean, he was mainly looking to see, is there anything in the existing code that would, that this fits into, and he didn't really find anything. To be honest with you, I think I would have to spend some time with him and thinking about how this could be crafted to uh, to not get us into a situation where it becomes a problem. And that's, and that's kind of what I mentioned in my memo. It's, I think it's a great concept for the yarn shop. It would kind of set a precedent, so I think we need to be aware of that and think about. I mean, the other part of this too is salsa mom, it's the, the restaurant that is not currently open. If it would reopen or another restaurant opens there and they come to us for a sidewalk cafe license for outdoor seating. A lot of that space in that northwest quadrant of the public square is, may end up being sort of restricted. You know, it's not gonna be open to the whole public like it is now. So I, there are things we need to take through um if, if the council wants to move forward on this.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, that was a good question, Councilor. I didn't know what question I had.
But can I make, can I make a comment to that? At the same time, and I, I hear you. My response to that is what is that space being utilized for?
I agree.
And if we can activate these spaces, I think that, that we can, however that's done. And, and perhaps um we need to make, take more time to, to think it through. But I think at activation of those spaces is what's important. I think if you're, if you're coming driving downtown at any town, right, and you, and you see people sitting outside and enjoying a cup of coffee or doing yarn s- s- stuff, witchery, I don't know, but it, uh, you know, whatever it is, uh, or, or then, you know, I think that you're, you're driving by, you're gonna turn your head, you're gonna pay attention to a little bit more. You're just, oh, this is kind of neat, like, you know.
Right.
Um, just like the places that, you know, you can go sit outside and grab a bite to eat or whatever. I think it creates a little bit more um excitement and, and is pretty contagious. And again, with, under the category of supporting and expanding small retail businesses.
So I would say, congratulations, Steve. You are on the, you're breaking new ground here. Which means you're going to learn all about the process of ordinances. And I would concur with Councilmember Schindler on the kind of special exception concept uh to the ordinance. Because I think that's exactly what this is. It's also, you know, being very familiar with that corner as we all are, that the square. You know, it's also fairly unique when it comes to sidewalk space in that, you know, it's deeply inset from the street um in all four directions. So I, I, I think that uh it's an exciting concept. And I also think we need to make sure we're not jumping out of the frying pan into the fire, so to speak. So that's why I would support a, a, a concept, you know, the idea of creating us revising the ordinance to create a special exception opportunity. The other thing I would uh contemplate out loud here is um a lot of, I've read through the whole, you know, presentation, uh, the whole packet. Earlier, and a lot of it is driven by the, the, the current tenant, your current tenant, the yarn shop, um, which, you know, I have heard has been well-received. And so, but I'm looking at, you know, by ten, fifteen years down the road, who's in there and what they're gonna be doing. So I think in any special exception language uh in an ordinance, there would need to be some semblance of um if the situation changes, i.e. the tenant changes and they're not backfilled with a similar tenant or whatever, that, you know, that's, this is not just like a permanent forever grant, granting of it. But I like the idea. I think you're right.
Agreed.
I think the uh, the concept does bring uh, you know, activating public space. Albeit, this is activating public space for exclusively private use. But having said that, um, you know, I think uh, I think it enhances things and there is the space to do it in this particular case. Uh, so I would encourage you to, the staff to um, to bring back an ordinance that has, you know, a special exception opportunity. Then you have the rules to work by.
And I think having, I think eating and, and activity, right? Those are the differences in creating an outside space that is um designated for residents or for someone to sit and chill. I think that the eating is the activity. And then if the yarn is, you know, the activity that is being done there based off of the business that's sold there, if that makes sense. So this is not like, oh, creating a space for people to come and, you know, eat ice cream. Um, this is a demonstration of what's happening with the business that is selling the yarn there and how they do it. So something around that I feel like would be good because the, the places like the Alexandria House or Professional Building, and I'm, maybe I shouldn't have said it, other businesses. If there's an activity, um, then I feel like that's a difference than creating a space where your people can kind of chill, you know, in the public spaces for everyone.
So I, I think uh Mr. Owens' plan is, is really pretty well thought out. Um, it looks, like I said, it's gonna look a lot like some of the other sidewalk cafes. There are a couple minor things that we, we probably need to tweak on that. There's a traffic signal cabinet there that's gonna be real close to the fence, and so we may need to pull the fence back a little bit to get excellent. But what I will do is uh schedule time with the city attorney to uh start looking at this and trying to craft uh either a revision to the existing sidewalk cafe ordinance or, you know, whatever he feels appropriate and can bring it back to you in October for your consideration.
I have just one comment, um, because when I, when the agenda came out and I just briefly looked at it with the title creation of private seating area in public square, I did think about the benches being removed from public square. So um, just for everyone's awareness, this, this space we're talking about would be your ownership, not the city's, correct?
Well, the
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
My responsibility.
Not the land.
Right, 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 right. Yeah. Because I know that, I know that's probably being discussed as we speak about seating in public square, so just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
Yeah, so super happy that those benches have been removed. And at the same time, I am also trying to introduce different type of place for different types of activities. Yeah.
Yep.
Versus the gathering of
I think we'd all like to see a more, more vibrant, productive use of public space.
People doing things, activity, activity.
I think we're all on the same page there. I'm happy to um, you know, keep putting our heads together and going back to the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your investment. And you don't have your hat on, but it's probably because you're in the government.
I don't know, I just didn't wear a hat today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
All right, Antietam Creek's North Water Supply. We have Nancy Swift, uh, Utilities Director. I don't think that ever has.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
I just gonna do a brief
I just going to do a brief overview, since it's been a while since we've talked about the Antietam Source. It was in March of 2023 that the DNR approached the city regarding some stream water quality issues as it related to really fish reproduction associated with the existing impoundments. And it was at that time that we reached out to MDE to discuss the possibility of a different source on, and perhaps that source being on the Antietam Creek. It was in September of 2023, a year ago, that staff discussed the Antietam Creek as a source with the elected body. And was given direction to go ahead and move forward with some of the evaluation work using Hazen and Sawyer and the funding that had already been approved for engineering work at Edgemont Reservoir. So we're going to fast forward a little bit from there. And so between October of 23 and March of 24, we did that. And MDE gave us a lot of good guidance, what we needed to do in order to have that source considered, to actually be able to apply for an appropriation permit. Included the treatability of the water, what the appropriation could be, essentially what the stream could handle as far as a withdrawal was concerned. What would be the maximum amount of water we could draw, withdraw from the Antietam? What would the flow by capacity or flow by requirements be? The conservation flow essentially to keep the stream aquatic life, whether it be plant or animal, happy. And so we came back in March or, in March, and there is a lot of dis, we brought the proposal from Hazen and Sawyer back. We also included a proposal from Black and Beach because there's a wastewater component to this as well. And we've been kind of just setting still since then based on the discuss, discussion in March. One of the key points of that discussion in March of 2024 was a quarry lake, the viability of, of a quarry lake. Tyler reached out to Holcomb. We met with Holcomb. Holcomb, it was a very, very positive conversation. It was, we were very hopeful. But Holcomb did come back and indicate that they were not interested in partnering with the city, that they wanted to maintain that quarry lake for their operations. They currently only use it for quarry water. And they have a daily continuous discharge into the Antietam Creek. But they were not interested in giving up that source supply that they have for their business. You know, to the, to the city for any supplemental water that we might need from the Antietam. I don't, they were pretty, the email was pretty definitive that, no, we're not interested. It wasn't, you know, what, you know, we might entertain this in the future or something. It was, it's pretty much a, I would take it as a kind of a dead end. It's, it's not going to happen. In the meantime, MDE conveyed to Hazen and Sawyer that they were going to hold firm on flow by requirements, which is the conservation flow that has to be maintained in the stream, whether it be the conservation flow out of Edgemont Reservoir or conservation flow, calculated conservation flow in the Antietam. And MDE suggested that we may want to consider looking at groundwater supplies as a supplemental source to the Antietam. Just so that, that flow by, flow by can absolutely be met and the, would allow us to have, I'm going to say that withdrawal, withdrawal that would be more in line with where we would want to be. We haven't begun that work. Mostly be, well, the primary reason is, is we would need approval by the elected body to do that. To look at groundwater sources as opposed to quarry lakes. We did not reach out to, I think it's Craig that has the other quarry lake because of where they're located geographically. Getting that water to where, where we would site a water plant on the Antietam would just be cost prohibitive. So we did not explore another quarry supply. I would, would, I also want to point out that in some of the documentation we received from MDE, with the new appropriation permit, that during the July and August, it is possible that we would not be able to pull any water at all from Edgemont associated with the flow by conservation flows in the stream. They would, the, because that, that's partly driven by the current irrigation use in the area for farming. We would have to, that flow by would increase from 0.6 cubic feet per second to, I think, 2.1 cubic feet per second, which would mean that we, the water in the stream that we would have to release in order to pull the water out of the reservoir would exceed the volume of water that would naturally be flowing into the reservoir during those summer months. Warner Hollow and Raven Rock, nearly, there's times when there's virtually no flow in those streams during the summer. So those flow by requirements that would be for the Antietam, you know, they would be in place. And, but I don't, we don't believe based on what MDE told us that there would never, that there would ever be a time that we couldn't use the Antietam. Our use, the volume that we could pull could go down. But we could supplement that with groundwater if we wanted to pursue that. But I don't want to imply that, I, I want to be careful that everybody understands that if we move, if we continue to, to pursue the appropriation and the work at Edgemont. Edgemont, there'll be months, July and August specifically, and during state-defined drought periods, that we may not be able to withdraw any water at all for the water system. So I just, you know, there, there are limitations there that didn't exist before associated with environmental regulations. There, there would be those limitations also on the Antietam. We don't know exactly what they're going to look like yet because we haven't completed that work. But I, I don't want to leave the table with the understanding that we could pull 12 months a year, 365 days out of Edgemont because it's not, that's not a reasonable assumption. So just, you know, kind of a, a little bit of history there. When I was looking, I also wanted to share, because there was so much discussion about quarry lakes, that Frederick County, Virginia, not too far from here, entered into agreement to, to use quarry water. They built a new water plant and they can't treat the water. So this new water plant has to be upgraded. Some of the groundwater characteristics, they can't remove in conventional treatment. They're looking at, my understanding is reversed osmosis upgrades. They're looking at another reservoir. It was in Indiana. And that particular quarry lake, that reservoir, they actually blend it with their source water. It blends constantly and everywhere our quarry lake is being used, that's the case, where it's blended because of the treatability or, or the potential treatability issues. And I bring that out mostly because, not because we have the potential for a quarry lake right now as an alternate supply, but because even if we go with groundwater, we'll still have to look at the treatability of mixing that groundwater with the surface water to make sure that, you know, we can treat the water and meet all drinking water requirements. The issue in Frederick County, Virginia is nitrates. I wouldn't expect that we would have that problem in the, where we would be looking at groundwater supplies if, if we decided to move in that direction on the Antietam. I do also want to touch just some histories, and just some, just some general information, just reminders that our RC Wilson plant produces on average 11.5 million gallons per day. Our current sold allocation in the, in the water system is 14.5 million gallons per day. That's important because our appropriation is 15 MGD. Our plant design capacity is 20 MGD. The reason I bring that up is mostly because we are really going to need to make some decisions. Do we upgrade Wilson? Do we, do we, we increase the treatment capacity, hydraulic capacity and so forth of Wilson? Or are we going to invest in Edgemont for 750,000 gallons of water a day, 0.75 MGD to supplement? Or are we going to continue to pursue the Antietam and try to get an appropriation of 5 MGD? But, you know, we've sold 14.5 million gallons per day. That's not what's being used by our customers, but it is what we have sold to date. We thought perhaps there would be any number of customers looking to transfer allocation from one property to another, or that's not happening. We've had very few requests for transfer of allocation. And those transfer of allocations have been, the requests that we've had, and we've had three or four have been, you know, from property one that I owned to property two that I own, which does, for new, new development, there's, you know, there's not been any requests for property owner A to transfer to property owner B.
To change ownership.
And there, and that's understandable because that's allocation they purchased. That was an investment they made in their property. And, you know, and that's something we would not get involved in the money side of it. We would just approve. If it met all of our criteria in code, we would just approve it. So we're not seeing any real gain, any savings in, if you will, in allocation being sold. New developments, new properties that are being developed, that are coming online are purchasing, I'm going to say, new allocation. So I think it's important that everybody kind of understand where we're at from the amount of water we're putting out, the amount of water that we've sold, the treatment, the design capacity of the plant, and the limitations associated with the Wilson plant and the transmission mains and the need to, I'm going to say, move off of, move off of, you know, go, you know, pick a direction and, and go in that direction. We need to move forward with the transmission mains regardless. We do have, as you guys are aware, we do have some funding for that to get that work started, not a lot, but we do have some. We do have some funding the state has identified for Edgemont. We've not applied for funding for, for Antietam because it's, it's too, it's premature. So with all of that, you know, staff is, what our recommendation is, is to complete the work that we started on the Antietam to look at the viability of the Antietam, of Antietam Creek. I included the proposal from Hazen and Sawyer, that, that proposal includes a whole lot more than just looking at the viability, whether or not it, the appropriation.
Oh, it's online.
Okay.
That was huge.
It's huge.
Yeah, it was over 800. The total proposal was over $800,000. But, but that's to complete all of the tasks. Right now, what we really need to do is complete the first several tasks. And that would tell us, that would let us move forward with MDE for them to say, yes, appropriation can be approved. Get that appropriate application in, get the initial studies done on the treatability of the water. But not invest in, at this time, not invest in the sighting of the plant and any type of preliminary design for the withdrawal. And you remember when we were here in March, we also had a proposal from Black and Beach to look at the wastewater side. So my recommendation would be to move off of, to move forward with at least the initial study to, for, to determine whether or not MDE will absolutely approve appropriation, what that volume, what that appropriation would be and whether or not, whether or not there's any treatability issues. I'm going to continue to hold as tight as I can to somewhere between 2.5 and 5 MGD appropriation. Far better than what we'll have at, at Edgemont. And I can tell you, if we had had the Antietam, we would have been most appreciative of being able to push three to four million gallons, three to four MGD water into our system on Saturday and Sunday. We could, we could only put about eight million from the Wilson plant once we could get it back up and running, which was three to three and a half MGD below what customer, customer demand was. So, you know, any type of issue with the water quality and the Potomac, putting that on the back burner, any type of catastrophic pipe failure where we can't push the volume of water we need out of the Wilson plant because we're pushing through one pipe would be, would have been very helpful, would have been very useful in being able to keep. We would have likely been able to keep 100% of our customers in water. The exception may have been Greenberry Hills because of elevation, but. So, you know, aside from water quality issues in the Potomac as looking at a supplemental source, when we have an issue like we had this weekend, that second source would be really important to the system and to our customers as well. So that, you know, that is, would be staff's recommendation and staff's request is to move forward.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. But also just the comment about the, the water main break over the weekend. Again, thank you guys for, for addressing that and over, what, 100-year-old pipe?
Just about.
Just 100-year-old pipe. So, yeah, but thank you.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome. What I will do is I will ask Hazen and Sawyer to amend their proposal.
I don't, I was about to say, hold on a second.
I feel like I have to try and be Councilmember Alshire today. So I, I have a couple of questions and I'll be honest, a little, a lot of this water stuff is a little, there's a lot of information here, so I'm going to try to summarize it into like an idiot version, if I can. So a couple of things I want to make sure I'm just very clear on. The maximum capacity right now of our plant, if we were to upgrade it, is 20.
Our design capacity, the design capacity of the Wilson plant today is 20 MGD.
Without an upgrade?
Yes, but we, you have to remember.
We can't do 20.
We can't do 20 million out of it. We have the limitations of the transmission mains, but we have the hydraulic, hydraulic limitations at the plant. That 20 MGD doesn't reflect regulations that are in place today. You know, it reflects regulations. It was in effect really in the seventies.
That was the first part. The, the second part is, and I guess you're not asking us to make a decision on this right now, but whether we use Edgemont as the holding to supplement the water, if the flow is too low in the Antietam, if we went that route, we would need this water to supplement and make sure we don't fall beneath a certain flow in the Antietam. Is that my understanding?
If, yes. The state is going to hold tight to what they If, yes, the state is going to hold tight to what they call flow-by requirements. So they're suggesting that in order to have maximum appropriation on the Antietam, that we look at a groundwater supply wells in closer proximity as to where the plant, the new water plant would be. It's just to maximize capacity.
So then if the flow in the Antietam was too low, we would pull from that source, right? Okay, so the the, I guess the other question is, we're estimating Edgemont would be like a quarter of a million, not not even one million, right? Like, like three quarters of a million. If we pulled from, you know, wells, what would be that, what would that capacity look like?
Just wells, I do not know. We haven't done that work yet. We're requesting between two, five million is what we're requesting. From the Antietam. I expect the appropriation to be two point five to three with a with a max of five, just like Wilson's fifteen and eighteen.
And then the the other question is, right now, we are producing eleven and a half million gallons. We've sold fourteen and a half. So in theory, we've already overpromised, or we've already oversold water. In theory, if everybody used the maximum amount of water they purchased.
We would have a tough time. We could, we could push it out, but we would have a tough time maintaining storage.
Is is, my next question is before we invest another nine hundred thousand dollars in taxpayer money on the the rest of the creek study, is that extra five max that we are gonna request from MDE from Antietam, is, are we, are we getting anywhere? I'm sorry, I, that doesn't sound.
MDE is receptive. We have, everything has been kind of, kind of on hold for several months. MDE is receptive. They they've been very forthcoming with information and requirements and that's and that sort of thing. I truly believe that any appropriation we get from the Antietam will be much, much higher the average, our average day appropriation than what we have from Edgemont. Just because of the sort, just because Winter Hall and Raven Rock are just do not produce, are just not high volume streams. And the the eight hundred ninety eight thousand dollars that is attached is what we brought forward in March. What I would do is ask Hazen to revamp this, just to get us through the, what we need to do for the appropriation application to see, for viability. And to get through that viability phase of this, and to remove any like preliminary engineering work, looking at the intake and citing the plant and that sort of thing. We know approximately where we want it, that can, all of that can wait until we know what MDE is gonna do. So I would request that I be able to bring a proposal back, but it wouldn't be the proposal that's in here. I would request that this be updated to reduce the scope of work. And we would not be bring back a proposal at this time for Black and Beach to look at the wastewater side of it, to begin that work. We'll wait till we have some, I'm gonna say definitive numbers from MDE. And one of the things I'll also ask is for a preliminary cost estimate. If the appropriation numbers look good, ask for a preliminary cost estimate for design, construction, and that sort of thing of the intake, distribution system upgrades, as well as the plant itself.
One more, one more question, and then I'll leave it be. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, you're fine.
Don't be sorry.
The one, one other piece of this that I've heard Councilmember Alshar ask a couple of times, and and I don't see it here, but I just want to make sure I understand. So so right now, we're talking about Edgemont and or groundwater as to maintain the flow of Antietam.
Not Edgemont, we would not use, no.
If we were to use it, right?
Well, no, the decision that we're really looking for is Antietam or Edgemont. Put Edgemont on, what we're recommending is just put Edgemont on the back burner to see if Antietam, to determine if Antietam is a more viable source for us. I don't know, Edgemont does not directly discharge into the Antietam Creek in the vicinity of where we're going to be. So the, what we would look at as part of the Antietam study is looking at a groundwater, a well supply to supplement for that flow by.
A piece that I'm not seeing here and I know about, I've heard asked, was about water storage. Does that factor into this anywhere? Like, I know Edgemont, if we don't use it and we use the Antietam, do we have any kind of a thought on having somewhere to store some water? Has that been a part of the conversation at all, or?
Well, raw water storage, that's what the Quarry Lake was, and it's raw waters, yeah. So what Councilman Alshar, when he talked about the Quarry Lakes, he's really talking about raw water storage. So your groundwater supply essentially would be your backup raw water storage. If Edgemont were to be your raw water storage and we built, we built the infrastructure to flow that water into the plant, still the maximum you could get is point seven five MGD.
Thank you.
Help me.
Councilmember Brainy?
I just want to say, first of all, if you could pass on to those Water, Hagerstown Water Department staff who did an excellent job working around the clock over the weekend, you know, things break. You know, my car goes in the shop more times than I'd like. Things wear out, and unfortunately, when those things are buried in the ground, you don't know it until there's a problem. So thank you to everyone who responded. I'm assuming you were there at some point.
Yeah, we were both there. We were both there the whole time.
So thank you to the staff who worked hard, the the Hagerstown Water Department, who worked hard to get that done. So in regard to this particular ask, I have a couple of concerns, issues. So I'm just gonna state them. I'm not really looking for tonight for a lot, a lot more discussion because you've already kind of explained your position. And that is, the one thing that I agree with you on, that you commented on tonight, Director, is that Hagerstown, which is the governmental agency, the jurisdiction that's responsible for the water system for our entire region, has a responsibility to ensure that we have not only enough water for today, but enough water for tomorrow and next year and five years and ten years and twenty years from now. Because personally, I see our region continuing to grow, both in residential and commercial and industrial economic development. And I think that, first of all, I think Hagerstown should be proud that we have such an excellent system currently, and we should also be cognizant of the fact that, as you said, you know, we, we need to prepare. So I have a hundred percent in agreement on that. What I'm not in agreement on is, at least at this point, is utilizing the Antietam Creek and backing it up with groundwater. And I quite honestly have, am getting mixed signals about the Edgemont reservoir, so personally. And I, I know that, you know, my, 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 my master's degree is in civil engineering, but it did not specialize in water systems. But having said that, I guess right now, I know enough to be dangerous. And so I, I think we know that there's an issue with Edgemont reservoir, but I don't know or don't understand, and I honestly am not asking you to take the time tonight to get into the in-depth discussion of, you know, understanding that. My groundwater concern is, and as you know, because I've sent lots of articles that I've read to Mayor and Council and copied water staff on, on, you know, the the PFAS issue, which for those who aren't familiar with PFAS, PFAS, you know, the the microplastics that are in water that generally come from, majority of the time, come from groundwater sources. And I think that we're fortunate right now with our water system, that our water is surface water, i.e. the Potomac River. So we don't have the level of PFAS issues that other communities, other water systems are experiencing. I also know that, well, there's two more points I want to make. One is that the technology around water systems, filtering and so forth, and all that goes into it, is growing by leaps and bounds. Kind of like we talk about computers, you know, you buy one, you get it home, it's already obsolete. You know, this technology is, is, is exploding. And I think there are things that we haven't investigated that we should. You mentioned reverse osmosis, and that's becoming more and more prevalent as, as a, you know, as creating that level of purity. And then finally, just from a technical process standpoint, and I'll just be honest with you, it does not sit easy for me that while I'm sure they're a very good firm, that this new project that we haven't even gone taking it out to bid, that that we're basically relying on our, you know, our continuing relationship with one vendor, one engineering company on, on pricing and and this, this item, and I don't mean to minimalize the the importance of the work, but this one item is just to see if it's viable to do it, is just under a million dollars. So I, I'm, it, it does not set easy with things. So my answer tonight is that I'm voting on an unfavorable report, if you will, I'm saying no. I'm not nodding my head yes. So I'd love to have more conversation.
Thank you.
So your comment was, you'd like to, would you like to learn more about Edgemont and what is involved with Edgemont? If so, I mean, that would be, Mike Spiker took me on a tour up there and from, you know, from Edgemont up to Raven Rock and showed the entire thing. That might be something any of you would, would benefit from because it is a completely different process than what getting it from the Potomac is, and and the whole technology behind how reservoir works was fascinating when he took me on. So I'd, I'd suggest that if any of you would like to do that.
I would love to do that.
Have, have that happen.
I would love to do that. And I also, Nancy, thank you for all of that, right? But also, I wouldn't, I mean, I don't have a vote, but I wouldn't feel comfortable without hearing the Councilmember Alshar as well as Councilwoman McIntyre, because this has been such a ongoing, long conversation. So I don't think, I think that's best, is that we don't make any, there's no decisions made, that this is just the information coming. I know they're watching and listening, well, maybe not right this second, but they will, and I'd like to to keep it going.
Yeah, and, you know, if, I would expect that we would have a revised proposal ready and for next month. And so if that is ready and there's room on the agenda, we can certainly discuss that again next month, and maybe between now and then, we can go ahead and plan to, plan a watershed tour just so everybody, if nothing else, can kind of visualize, you know, I'm saying what's in front of all of us as far as Edgemont is concerned. That should give us plenty of time to do that.
Thank you. And you said so much. Anything else? Next, we have vagrancy discussion. Our Police Chief Joey Kiper. I don't see Captain, but I do see Ashley Rouse from HPD, our Community Liaison Coordinator. Yeah, Martha was, she must be here on behalf of.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
I know Scott asked us to come in and talk about vagrancy issues, and we're happy to do that with you guys tonight. I know you heard quite a bit of the, the issue from the services that were up here earlier. So without belaboring all over that over again, I'd really just probably just open it up as questions as to what you have questions in terms of vagrancy referenced to us. I know we pulled some numbers that we can give you guys tonight, just to give you a sense of what the Police Department does in terms of these types of calls. So we looked at, well, it actually talks to you about the kind of calls we pulled, and they're not all inclusive, but it gives us a good snapshot of what's, what we're looking at, what we're dealing with. So I'll actually talk about a little bit about the numbers she she pulled today.
Yeah, so year to date, so start of the January one to yesterday, most of our calls, when we're talking about the issues that that we have been talking about, come in as undesirables, trespassing, theft in progress, burglaries reported and burglaries in progress. That is not like your typical, I think burglary, people get, you know, think that someone like breaking in your house with like a firearm or that's reported as something else. A lot of these are things like breaking into sheds or condemned structures. That's what code gets calls a lot for. With those totals year to date, we're at roughly three thousand seven hundred and five calls for service. Now, you just think that's multiple officers responding to each of those calls, so sometimes you're pulling two and three officers to one call. So I'm not great at math, but you can do the math. That's a lot of officer response, and we're only in September.
So we run about sixty thousand calls a year. It doesn't sound like it's a lot of calls when it comes to those three types of calls, and that's just three types of calls. But it gives you a snapshot of the, the, the volume and the, the need and the taxing nature of what's homelessness, vagrancy, and we talk about vagrancy, we're talking about homelessness, we're talking about mental health issues, we're talking about addiction issues. So it's not just homeless, not just one category of folks that are, that we're getting calls on. This also doesn't cover EMS responses that come to these, these responses, and the Fire Department helps us on a lot of these calls. So you're getting, you know, overdoses can be part of this as well, and we run those numbers. So the issue is, is unfortunately, the issue has grown significantly over the last five years. The men and women in the department, not only just see it, they feel it. Yes, like I said, it's taxing on them. You've heard it from the constituents in meetings that we've been in. Last night, you heard, you heard some of that last night. So it's an issue that, that, you know, I'm gonna say it because we always say it, it's not just here, it's everywhere, but we feel it. And the, the issues are, as you heard earlier, not something that's gonna be an easy fix to try to to correct what's going on. So we have a lot of services here that are doing their part. They're limited on what they can do with the finances and the funding that they have, but we meet and we try to come up with new strategies and new ideas to to help with that, that trend. We just had a homeless strategy meeting last, last Thursday. That was probably the most productive strategy meeting I've been involved in when it comes to the Homeless Coalition in a very long time. I don't want to release what that strategy looks like right now because we, we just came up with the, the, the the plan of what, how we want to address this, but the nice thing about the plan that we've come up with is it doesn't tax one individual organization. It doesn't tax the Police Department, it doesn't tax the city. And it, it looks for a collaboration outside of the normal entities that you think come to these, these collaborative efforts. So we're, we're hoping we can come back in short order and and let you know what that kind of looks like. And at that point, there might be something from the City Council that that may want to be more involved with that. And at that point, there might be something from the city council that, that may want to be more involved with that, that strategy. But those are just some of the things that we're, we're kind of looking at. But the challenges are that there's limited space on, on shelters when it comes to homeless. There is no mandates that you have to go into treatment if you're suffering from substance abuse. And when you're ready and you're, you're ready to go, there may not be something open. When it comes to that. So Ashley's been doing a lot as the community liaison coordinator. It's really changed and morphed into something different than what we created the position for because based on need. So she's been a lot more boots on the ground, out on the street, working with this population of folks. Trying to help in the way that she can, getting to know all, all of them as much as she can, building that trust so that they, they will talk to her and come to her about. Wanting to get help or the needs that they have. And she's transported several to the eastern shore for long-term treatment facilities when they want to go. She's made arrangements and she'll grab an officer and they'll, they'll spend a day transporting someone to the eastern shore to a facility for, for their substance abuse. She's working with all the community partners, trying to, again, just trying to figure the best strategy and the way we can move together. But it's, it's been tough and this conversation will lead into the very next topic on the agenda. Which, you know, is a nice parlay for what we're talking about, but, but I'm going to leave it open for some discussions for you guys first.
I think for me, my, my question would be to definitely you, Ashley, who you're out there with officers is. What's, what is happening with those that are kind of as a, I believe she's, yeah, Ms. Janie was talking about. That are, that. That are unaccountable and that won't be accounted for and that are doing things and they won't get treatment and they won't, they won't. You know, take advantage of the housing or they have been in something, but they've broken every, you know, rule within an agency. Just in my walks, I'm, I'm seeing faces that are completely unfamiliar, that do not, I mean, brand new faces. At least three, four times a week in, in groups of folks. When it comes to that type of, of issue. How do you navigate through that to know? And, and I mean, maybe it's not a question, maybe it's just, I'm just asking myself, but how do you navigate through that? Because when folks are breaking into people's, you know, properties or, I mean, they just got a call about in a, a, a building. You know, that they keep breaking into, folks keep breaking into that. What, how can we help those property owners that are now catching the, the brunt of? You know, and financially burdened behind, whether it's homeless or whether it's mental health, whatever. And how, how do we, you know, distinguish the difference between the two? Because we talk about language all the time and they'll say all folks this way, all folks that way. But I think that that's the same in this case, like we can't group everyone together and say, we have to meet them where they're at. No, if you're, if you're, if you're breaking the law, me, me and you where you're at with services is not okay. You know, and so I think for the public. And definitely people I talk to all the time are kind of tired of hearing we're meeting folks where they're at when these are repeat offenders into their properties. Or to, to using the bathroom in their front yards. I mean, things like that.
Yeah, I think we could probably just lump this into all one giant conversation here. So at, at least for us, you know, our goal with. You know, the community programs aspect and the alternative response model is to educate, encourage, but ultimately enforce. And, and, oh, sorry. Is to educate, encourage, but ultimately enforce and enforcement action unfortunately is just something that has to happen. Because as G D mentioned earlier, as a number of community partners, I believe, are starting to see and to realize. There are just some people that are choosing not to help. They are choosing to get into cars, break into cars, burglarize homes, garages, all of these things. And you're right, it's not fair to the folks that live here and work here and want to come visit here. So ultimately we do have to enforce. However, with recent legislation changes. That makes these guys back here, that makes that job super hard for them. The chief can touch on that more. You know, I've been with HPD for the better part of 10 years and when I came here in 2014, legislation looked a lot different. That was also a department that had lots of specialized units because we had manpower because of, you know, we had those things. Right now, we don't have those things and a lot of it is to do with legislation change. Legislation changes affect that.
So we, what, how we're addressing what you talked about, you know, in the current legislative climate, it'll give us the ability to do is that we advise, we cite and we arrest. So in, in large part, most of the things you've talked about outside of burglarizing of, of, you know, a property and being called on someone's property for that trespassing. Urinating in public, all those other little nuisance type of, of crimes. Those are citable offenses, which means I gotta give you a ticket. We, the state legislator took away the ability for us to physically arrest you with those kinds of crimes. So we can eventually arrest you and we can show that we've, we've advised you not to do this. We come back and we catch you doing again, we give you a citation, we come back again, we give you another, we come back again a third time. At times, okay, you're not listening to the citation and the law kind of tells us we have to show that there are some means that you're just avoiding. Following the rules when it comes to that and we can make the arrest. But that doesn't really solve the problem either, because when they go to see the commissioner, the commissioner just puts, you know. A no bond releases them back out into the community waiting to go to trial for the charges. And then they have a third charge for the same kind of thing going on because the jail is full. And the jail doesn't have the capacity to take the, the nuisance crime issues of people that are committing these things. So, you know, it's, it's, it's compounding. As you move down, down the chain, there's more barriers that, that cause you not to do that. But the biggest issue that's caused the. The, the biggest problem for law enforcement is the legislative change that happened with the, the justice reinvestment act. And taking away the ability of law enforcement to address real issues, real time. Has, has had a big impact and it's, it's promulgated itself into the, to the culture that people don't believe they have to follow the rules. And the consequences don't feel the same for them because I can give you this piece of paper and you get to walk away. And they don't care. They don't care that that's happening. When we're talking about the ones that we're talking about here, the ones with free will. Not everybody that we're dealing with that you see in, in the population are homeless. They just, they're unemployed. They don't want to work. They want to hang around on the streets. That's their lifestyle. That's what they want to do. They, they look the part because of, you know, people lump everybody together, like you said. But not everybody's in that category. So Ashley's job, she does a great job at this, along with some of the CROs and, and some of our officers that are really getting invested in this. They have learned who the people are in our community that want help. They know who they are and they may not be at that point yet sometimes, but they know where, they know who they are and they keep working to get them there. And she's had, she's got stories that she's told me that she spent six months, you know, hounding someone to get in a treatment or hounding someone to get help. And they eventually do and they, you know, the young lady just emailed her. Couple of weeks ago that she worked on for every year with a, with a nine-year-old daughter and her and her family, she's, she's fine, she's in place, she's got her kid back. You know, it's a success story, but it took a long time for one person. And, and then she's just one person. So. That's with the alternative response, you know, coming to you and bringing back, you know, what we're talking about here and what we budgeted in our budget to talk about. Helps to expand what we want to do and why we want to do it. But from that vagrancy standpoint, it's. And I've said this to the, to the service providers that we go to the meetings for, we, we've been putting our finger in the hole in the dam. For as long as I've been here with all these issues because there's not enough money for the providers, not enough provider services. You know, when I say services, I'm talking about facilities. So they're case managing, they're doing all the work they can do, they're, they, they ramp up as much as they can. But the water behind the dam is filling up higher and higher. And there's got to be a bigger solution that's beyond this table. That's beyond what we're doing here. And that's a much bigger discussion. So what can we do here is, you know. Expand alternative response within the city, take ownership of what we want to do in that sense. Be a force multiplier to the service providers that are out there, but we can help control those things when it comes to. Lowering the cost of service for our guys, not having our guys go handle calls for service with calls that aren't police related. That was the whole component behind justice reinvestment, right? Is to take non-police calls away from police officers to go handle. Well, the reality is that most of the calls we go on have nothing to do with policing. They just don't. Most of the calls are social driven calls for service. They just really are. And that's been that way as long as I've been doing the job. It's gotten a lot more. But that's what we do in, in policing today. So we're not going to take all that away, but if we can reduce some of that. And put that into hands of people that are social workers that would be working for the city, which is the one of positions we're asking to. Finally get a final approval from you guys to be able to open that position up and hire. It's in our budget that we budgeted in this, this fiscal year. To work with Ashley to eventually add some, some sworn officers to that team. And eventually add peers and some other people to that team that can go out here and, and work those issues with the population to allow them to get the help they want when they want it. But also to identify those that don't want to help so that we can do the enforcement component. Because I agree with you 1,000%. We can't just avoid that. That's, that's not there. What we've been doing for the vagrancy side, at least in the downtown area for the last six or eight months is every single morning, early in the morning before businesses open up. Our guys go around and they roust up anybody that's sleeping in, in the cubby holes around the businesses downtown. They're making sure that the people coming to work, they're not having to step over someone to get into their business. And we've been doing that for a while. We've been doing that now for six or eight months and talking to people that, the business owners downtown, that's had an impact. That's been, that's been a positive. It's not solving the problem. It's just moving it along and, and making it go away visibly for everyone else. So, yeah.
But I ask that because I think that it's important and I know you've talked about it multiple different times, but I think that it's important that people understand that there's. There's things that are in place that is higher up in the body, right? And so when you explain it in that way, that helps the folks be able to understand. That the, the worst thing you can get is the phone calls from people who are, you know, trying to get by, working families. And then to, to not be able to explain that from your expertise, right? I'm not the police. I don't have the correct language, you know, but being able to say that and, and still be listening to a person around their safety and their property.
And I, I don't want, I don't want anybody to think that I'm saying this because we're not trying to do anything else. Because it doesn't matter that state legislation changed the rules to the game and took away abilities of us. It doesn't matter to the people that are feeling this in the community. It doesn't matter to them that that's happened. They still want something to be done and our goal and our objective is to try to make that happen within the guidelines of what we have the ability to do. So creating the alternative response team, changing the mode of what Ashley's been doing to be more active in the street along with someone else. Creating these two positions to start this program adds value because we've got other entities in the nonprofit world that are doing similar work. For, for different goals, goals that I want to make that very clear. So the goal of other entities, the other outreach teams isn't the same as what our team is. Our team is to reduce calls for service. That's the first and foremost thing to do for police, to policing, right? The second function is to change the image of Hagerstown by helping that quality of life visibility issue. That's not the function of the other nonprofits. They're, they're have a different function. What they do helps with that as well, but that's not their function. Okay. So in doing those things, we can, we can change the visuals of the city by force multiplying. So it's not a competition. I know some of my, our nonprofit friends tend to get a little. Worried that the city's stepping into an area that there, we've never been in before and that we're trying to do something because they're not doing it. That is not the case here. We're doing this because we have a different function that we want to, we want to meet and a different goal we want to reach.
Well, we also have different parameters. You know, Melissa Dash, which is up here talking about how the minute, you know, she. You have to have the problem in order for her to get funding to help try to solve that problem. The more we can invest as a city, I don't have to follow the same rules. I don't have that red tape that they have to go through. They have certain parameters that those grants have to say. Like we don't have those as city staff that all of them do that restricts who they can serve, when they can serve them, how they can serve them. We don't have that.
So looking for solutions that are, that are bigger, and I think that's going to include the county to be involved. As, as it was mentioned last night in the meeting by several people last night, that the county's going to have to be involved with this, this solution to this much bigger problem. If the, if the government's involved in that sense, the county and the city's involved, then as Ashley's saying, we don't have the same rules. We don't have to worry about HUD rules. That determine when you're homeless and when you're not homeless, based on what, what services you can get. That, that our partners in the back of the room suffer from. I mean, they, they, they get frustrated by that. They want to help someone and. One little thing changes in that person's life and then I can't help you in the same way because that, that happened, that changed. So. Being able to do things similar but different, I think can have a big impact on our community. And I know it's, we're already talking about Ashley and one more person right now. So it's not going to be this. Swell of change, but I think, you know, having that ability to make that happen. Giving her some assistance and some help and it's going to be a, it's going to be a social worker, someone that's got that skillset and that certification. Will allow them to, to get into things that we can't, that Ashley can't because she doesn't have the certifications. So that'll, that'll allow us to, to parley into some different things there as well. So the goal was to create a team, you know, I ultimately I'd like to see a team that's a collaborative team like a task force. As other agencies, part of our team that they assign, they assign staff to and that we can go out as, you know, a team of six or eight. That all have different abilities and different skillsets that, that we can share and, and work with them. But we got to start somewhere and that's where alternative response is for us. When I mentioned that the last legislative session, there was talk of mandating this for, for governments to do within the state around. We were already working on doing this before that happened. It didn't come to fruition from what I understand, but it's coming down the pike. It's going to be mandated and we're going to have to do it anyway. So I'd rather be on the front end, making what we think is the best way to do and let the state follow us and be the model that they want to follow. Instead of mandating things that maybe doesn't quite work for Hagerstown.
Well, and ultimately we're also a resource for other city departments. I mean, I work super closely with parks and rec. I work super closely with public works, super closely with code enforcement. So, I mean, we're already collaborating with those other, other departments. So ultimately as, as the team hopefully grows, we can also alleviate some of the stress that, and, and extra responsibility that, that they're seeing too from their plate.
Are we, are we merging all the conversations?
That chief had transitioned us.
It seemed like a good transition point to flow into that while we're part of the discussion.
And I'm sorry, this, this might be a little outside of the scope, but if it is, just shut me down. But you heard it last night, I'm sure. I've heard it last night and, and I keep hearing it. I just, I'd want to get it out in the ether. If someone is using an illegal drug. In the middle of the day in public and the police see it, what do the police do? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but that is, that is a. There's a story out there with that, that we are doing nothing, that we're turning another eye to someone using an illegal substance in public in front of police.
Okay. So there's some, some nuances to that discussion. So if what we come across as someone that has paraphernalia on them at the time we show up. Then there's a correctness to the fact that we're not going to do anything in terms of making an arrest or charge because again. The state legislation, state legislator has. Decriminalized paraphernalia. So if I come, show up and they've got a needle or if they have a smoking pipe or a crack pipe. And there's no drugs actually with them, then, then yes, there's not a whole lot I'm going to do. We will refer to lead, you know, the lead program. We will, we will try to get down that path and, and do the other options that we have to our advantage. If there's a warrant for them or if we're checking them out for those other things, then they, they can get arrested for something else. But for the actual usage, unless we catch them with the drugs, actually with the drugs, then if it's just paraphernalia, nothing's going to happen. If they've already used the, the drugs, if they've taken a pill or they've done something else and it's in their system and someone watched them do that, again, there's nothing we can do about that. There is no possession, you know, by ingestion. I can't say what, you, you've got it in you, so now I'm going to charge you. A long time ago, back, back when I was on the street, we used to charge underage kids with alcohol by consumption and was determined that that was illegal. We couldn't do that. It was against the constitution. So those things don't exist for us to do. So unless we catch you with the drugs. So unless we catch you with the drugs, and I know it's frustrating to the public when they see a drug deal happen or they see someone using right in front of them and by the time we get there, those components of evidence aren't existing anymore and then they see us not, they see someone walking away, they feel like we're not doing anything. We just don't have the capability under the law to do anything at that point. So if that answers that, that part of the question. And again, you know, I sympathize, you know, I I I've I've got family that live in in around the city that, you know, would complain to me about, just I'll use this as an example, you know, speeding on my street. You know, they live on a street that that you you could sit out on a street for half a day and you see one car fly down the street, but they live there every day. And every day they see that one car get down the street fast and every day that becomes guess what to them? Everyone's speeding down my street. So the same thing, if you see drug dealing or you see something else, when you see it every day from your business window or from your home, you know, you may not see it every day, but when you see it, it seems like it's every day. And unfortunately, no matter, you can give me all the cops in the world, I can't be everywhere. And we're still going to have to respond to most of that. We're still going to have to show up when you make the phone call. And and I I again, I sympathize with the people that feel this and see it and it's in their community or in their in their area where their business is at. Call us. Let us come out. Let us start identifying who these people are. If we don't have anything we charge with, we eventually will. They're be, they're going to do something. They may not be getting charged that day, but if they're using, they're burgarizing, they're stealing. Um, they're going to do something that's illegal that may not be directly related to that drug, uh or we're going to catch them with the drug eventually. And you guys see the stuff we put out. We get drug arrests all the time and, you know, and the guys, the guys are humping every day making arrests. I mean, it's guns, drugs and and uh those kinds of things. It's happening all the time. Uh, which is a shame that we've got to say that in our community. That's what we're seeing, but we're seeing it, Frederick's seeing it, you know, everyone else is seeing it. Um, but we do a really good job of making the arrest and and getting people charged up on that uh better than those other jurisdictions do.
Well, and a perception challenge we're recently having that we're noticing um with a lot of folks on the street, especially those that have active warrants a lot of times for failure to appear for trespassing um is that, you know, the officer will get out with them, they'll run their name, see that they have a warrant, and then you'll find out once they're in handcuffs that they have a wound that you can see muscle tissue in their bone through. Um, the reality is the detention center, they're not going to hold them at the jail. They won't hold them. Um, and so therefore you can't serve the warrant, so then they come out of those handcuffs.
We have to go, we have to stay in the hospital and stay out there for hours waiting for them to be released, medically released, just so the jail will take them.
Which means that's another two officers off the street if you do that.
Those are all those other things that play. And so the, so the guys on the street, the sergeants on the street uh have to make some of these decisions that are not popular. But we still have the rest of the city we have to enforce and sometimes if there's things that are happening, we we adjust. And it's not necessarily the best way to adjust, but it's it's the life we have and it's what we got to live within.
And and they will not hold someone under the influence either. So a lot of times people are like, why aren't you taking them? Why aren't you taking them? Because they will not hold them at the at the um correct or the detention.
Is the county detention center?
The the Washington County Detention Center.
Correct.
Run by the Washington County Government.
I believe so, yes.
Run by the Washington County Commissioners.
And Washington County.
So again, we're, we're not, we're not complaining, we're not complaining a- about any entity. We're just saying that's the facts, that's reality, what it is. And uh, and this is what we have to try to navigate with um some of the people we come across.
Thank you. I mean, that helps. I think hopefully it will help someone understand some of what what's going on. Thank you.
And if I could add on to that, um, I presume that the same answer goes for you know, a drug deal, so to speak. I mean, it was mentioned, and I think it was misspoken earlier with our panel today. Um, was mentioned, you know, the police, I'm trying to paraphrase, the police see a drug deal and they move them on. I'm hoping that's not the right, that was not the right characterization of the witnessing of, you know, an actual drug deal.
If if I'm telling you right now, if the men and women of Hagerstown Police Department witness a drug deal, they're not just witnesses. Okay, I can tell you that right now. That doesn't happen. Um, you know, everything again revolves around probable cause. So someone, someone just speaking saying we witnessed it, if we didn't witness it, we don't have probable cause to be able to get to the evidence that might be on that person, then yes, they may walk away because we didn't reach the level of probable cause to do what we got to do under the constitution. But if we, if we witness a drug deal, trust me, they're they're not walking away as long as the evidence and we have the probable cause to deal with that from a, from an arrest standpoint, that's going to happen.
Cause there was also something to that effect was said last night by the lady that lived at uh the corner, I think she said of Baltimore and South Potomac, you know, the the police see a drug deal when you know, she was alluding to the fact that nothing is done.
I I I think, I think, I think with her, I I sympathize in the fact that I think she was just frustrated with the activity going on in her block and around her area. There was also a residence that had uh been uh taken over by squatters. And um we had dealt, we had, we had dealt with the the owner and his brother um in terms of how to handle that because there's some legal issues that is beyond the police being able just to remove people from a house. So they they were frustrated, but ultimately they they understood that that was the proper legal remedy, that we did the best we could uh on scene. But that doesn't take away from the people who live next door to be frustrated that that was allowed to happen and continue. That's that's, I think that's where most of that came from and I sympathize with her about that.
Sure.
You know, um, but I can tell you that my guys, if they're witness to drug deals, they're not, they're not walking away.
Chief, for for the citizens that do witness um activity or criminal activity, there's a form on the website, correct? Where citizens can fill out. Is that actively being looked at?
It is.
Okay, because I think we should also push that um that link out to the forms.
Report to say something.
If it's, if it's happening right now, they need to make the phone call.
Right.
If it's something that they've been seeing or they witnessed it or they come home and someone else in their family said they witnessed something, then go online and fill that out and let us know because what that does, as you alluded to earlier, we follow the data. So we're going to push our manpower into the areas of the city that uh the data says we need to be at. So if you're, if you're reporting these issues to us, then that gets logged in and that gets part of our comstat, our biweekly comstat that our analyst looks at. That lets us know, here's the area of town that that there's an uptick in this kind of activity and then we make a plan and we go in and we try to address it there. Um, policing is going to be about chasing that. We're we're always going to be moving from one place to the next, you know, it's it's a responsive type of um game for us. I mean, it's, that's what it is. The sport is we respond. And we can be proactive to some degree, but we're always going to respond. You know, we're always coming in after something's happened or when something's happening, uh generally speaking, you know, we we can plan and we can predict and we can do investigations that are on the front and 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 go after people for that. But the general way of policing is it's a response sport. And um we don't have a crystal ball. We can't determine that this is going to happen right here, right now, most of the time. And I know that's been a big um, a big component of the 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 discussion here of late. Um, and you know, I'll I'll give a quick example and then I'll get off my soapbox for this. So I know you want to, you want to get more manpower here. I know you want to do the right thing for the police department, as do I. As do everyone in that's that works for that department. And we're struggling and we're fighting and we're going to figure it out and I'm confident we will. You could give me another hundred police officers and I could be on the street and it's not going to stop crime. It won't. You can surround the president or a former president with with secret service agents that know that he is a target, that know that he's a potential target, he or she, and someone still can take a shot at that person and succeed. So it's not about the amount of people. It's not about that at all. And I'm not digging, I'm not making a, I'm not making a, any kind of statement about secrets. I'm using as an example.
No, I hear what you're saying.
I'm using that as an example. They they know their focus. We have a city. I got to put my focus where the data tells me to be and I'm still guessing as to most of the time what could happen there. The patrol is going to ride around. It's these guys back here that see activity going on and use that to say, okay, this drew my eye. Now I'm going to look at this. And then that's how they catch people doing certain things that we didn't know about, right? But you could give me all these people, I could have someone standing on, you know, every other corner and on the opposite corner, something bad is going to happen. Because that's what human nature is. And a couple of years ago, we had two gentlemen, two of my guys, sergeant and lieutenant, standing in front of City Hall. And right around the corner, the other door, a stabbing happens. So I'm not saying I can't use more people because I can and I need more people and I want to get more people and I want to have a hundred, hundred guys on the street. You know, I want that because that makes life easier and it gives us the ability to do more things. But it's not going to take crime completely away. I'm not going to be naive and tell you that it will because it won't. It won't. So so what we're talking about here is doing the best we can with Ashley and a team that takes some of that responsibility away from the guys that we got now until I can get that team built back up. They're still going to handle those calls. They still have to go on those calls. We can't just say we're not. But it's why we did the watch centers, why we've done other things to try to alleviate that in lieu of getting those other people on the street and getting people hired. So I'm, I wanted to get off my soapbox a little bit, so I just.
No, but I, I understood what you were saying and um I think that if I wouldn't have heard it, you know, um if I would, if I would have just heard someone else say it, that I might have thought that you were saying they'll never be able to take care of this and and we're not doing what we're supposed to do for public safety. But what I heard you say was that if there's no way to predict where the person is going to, you know, shoot the gun or any of that, it's just a way to predict where um those things could happen at, is what I heard you say. And and even when I think about the shooting that happened and to know that officers were right there within moments because they were already right there. I mean, that happened within the Jonathan Street community during the day when the kids were getting off the bus, they were right there. Um, and so I heard you, I heard you principalize that you can put all these things up and you still can't control.
I can't, I can't, you know, contemporaneously tell you when someone's going to have a disagreement with somebody and decide to take action negatively. I mean, there's forty thousand people in the city. I I can't put an officer on every single person to to keep an eye on every single person. So I I'm not saying that a hundred police, a hundred police officers, two hundred police officers wouldn't reduce more crime. It would, but it's not going to make it all go away. You know, and and our crime stats aren't higher than they were before. I mean, I provided you guys the data, you know, that five years ago was higher than it is the last two years. And our arrests and the activities of what these guys back here have done with the the less staff that we've had far exceeded what we did five years ago. That's a testament to them. Now, not fair that they got to work hard and twice as hard and and have that, that, you know, that stress and that taxing. But that's where we are right now and they stepped up to the challenge and they do it every day and they do it and they do it well. But we need to move, you know, into finding other ways to get more people in the door to come to this agency because it is the best police agency around, around here. I would put it up against any agency in the country with the work these guys do. But we got to find a way to get more people here and that again, that's here in the next agenda. We get to that when we get to.
I mean, a lot of our points that we keep, keep coming back in a circle because if you're in a neighborhood and you're witnessing activity, don't wait until it gets really bad. I mean, still call, but don't wait till it gets really bad to sound the alarm because again, if you use that form, be able to to gather the data and officers can visit that neighborhood more often and can offer solutions like, again, more lighting in the area or or talking to those that are in this particular home that they had issues. So um again, we're just keep circling back to all this is connected in in some way or fashion, so.
And with Ashley and the team we want to put together, she'll be working with the nonprofit organizations that can bring those resources to the areas that she helps to identify through the policing activity that we're doing to say, we really need help over here. And then they can coordinate and collaborate that way, which, you know, they don't have that data. They don't get that data like we have. So there's ways for us to use utilize this team to do that as well.
So are you taking Ashley's title and making this the the one position, making this the community programs manager and then an additional team, team member?
Yes.
Keeping the the community engagement.
We were, we were transitioning, her position wouldn't change until January because she's on ARPA funding right now. So we wouldn't pick up this budgetary item for her, this new position until January. So the title wouldn't change until then because we have her on the ARPA funding through December um with the funding that we had originally hired her under. Uh, the other position.
We're moving on.
So one more thing about the, about the uh, the the response team is that uh Potomac Community Services uh came to us three months ago? Maybe a long enough, six months ago. So they came to us um wanting to know if we wanted to take some office space in the EJ Fennel Building down on East Stanton Tidham Street. Uh, if we had that, if we had need for it. Well, we were in, um, we were working on the budget for to get this alternative response team together. Um, and so we were like, yeah, we're going to give us space that uh at right now is no cost. Um, it's a shared space. We're going to be sharing with the the Washington County Health Department, the lead team. Um, and and then having the partnership with Potomac Community Services, which is a lot of what Ashley's team would be working with anyway. They've offered us space. Uh, that space is already available to us. Um, and I wanted to make sure that I brought that to your attention here, that we do have some other partners in the community that are reaching out, finding innovative ways to try to to collaborate as well.
And that is space for?
Alternative response.
Okay.
Which councilwoman member now has a question?
Uh, yeah, I've, um, are you?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so you mentioned that the alternative response team um has similar, will have similar responsibilities, but the goal is different. So will these services still interact with like the mobile crisis and lead and overdose response?
Absolutely.
Okay, and um for the two positions that's um, well, get two? Are we on the same thing? Um, will that, will these positions be your standard nine to five working hours or will it be like?
When we need, when we need.
When we need.
Ashley works all hours of the day and night. She's, she's here.
Right, I know that, but um, just wanted to ask that. Um, and will these positions accompany police officers on like active calls? Um, and referrals, referrals come out of of this response team too.
And that's why having that other position is so important, having someone with that social work background to make appropriate referrals. Um, because I I just, someone with that skill set uh would definitely be a value add to the team to make those appropriate referrals. I mean, I can certainly do it, um, but I don't have those credentials. Um, so having someone on the team that that can, that knows a lot more about it than I do would be great.
So the requirement is for social work background for both of the?
And that covers all of our community programs, HPD. So alternative response is essentially a community program. But I mean, we cover neighborhoods first. We cover all of our community outreach and events, national it out, work for like all of that stuff would fall under this team. Including our CROs eventually, uh, you know, the goal is to have strong personnel on the team as well.
And and like I said, because you know, the the outreach team we have now, we have specialists that are substance abuse specialist teams and then we have the mental health teams. So and we, we're going to utilize those those teams because that's their expertise. So this will be, you know, helping with that uh and getting to know some of these these uh individuals on the street that know, okay, I know that they need to be with uh mobile crisis or they need to be with health departments aside because we know that they have those those issues and those phone calls and collaborations can happen a little more seamlessly than they do now.
And eventually, I mean, there'll be data to support what's the team has been doing.
Oh, yeah.
So um, I mean, for next administration, I would hope that the response team be part of the state of the city just for that awareness of what, how this has improved efforts. I mean, we know that this is going to fix crime, um, but it will be helpful to see that.
And we're not going to look at just basic numbers of how many people do we help or how many people do we take someplace else. We're going to be measuring some, we're going to be using some community surveys to measure um, the the way people feel about, you know, areas of town or or, you know, what they're seeing in that visuals. Because again, um, a large part of that's that that component. How do you feel about what you're, what you see and not, not really what is going on? So we don't want to hide behind just numbers. We're going to try to give um a realistic um viewpoint of our data of what what we're actually trying to accomplish and what we can do. And again, I think the goal, you know, I've said this to Scott, the goal is to have a team that's that's, you know, five, eight people strong because I think that's, you know, division all itself, uh to do this work, there's enough work out there for it. But my goal is in in the interim is to still work with the other agencies and organizations, see if we can do a more of a task force kind of approach to it. I think that we can force multiply a lot with that uh by just having somebody assigned, like we do with our narcotics task force. We have, we have someone assigned, you know, other agencies have had people assigned and you can force multiply without taxing your own home agency as much. So still going to work on that moving forward because I think there's a, there's some value there. So still going to work on that moving forward because I think there's a, there's some value there.
Councilmember Brady?
Yep.
Thank you. And that's both of them, right? Now, we are at Hagerstown Police Department sworn case well, uh, what is happening?
It's been a long day.
Yeah, it has. But I started with my son Todd and all that. Um, AFSCME, ASME, three, three, seven, three, and non-union sworn pay scale and police training. Um, and we have our chief, Billy Piper, and we also have Mark Chan from HPD as well.
So we uh, had met with Scott um, back in April or May. Um, and was discussing the fact that we're in year three uh, of the union contract. And that's from the starting salary standpoint, uh, as we do every time in these contracts, we fall woefully behind. The jurisdictions around us in terms of the, the salary part of that. And. Albeit that we, we weren't, you know, losing anyone from our agency to other jurisdictions, um, we were worried that we would, could still have that happen uh, as we're, we're moving forward. And trying to, to draw and recruit people to want to come to work for us, um, money is the one thing that is, that they look at, you know, right off of that. So. Mark being the genius that he is, uh, and has made me look good over the years uh, with his, his brilliant mind. Uh, started running the numbers and started looking at our budget. He managed our budget beautifully. Um, started, started finding the way that we could. Open the contract up again for this to change this, to give us some, some uh, legs to, to stand on. Before July of next year, when we would be normally changing this. Uh, if you remember, if any of you that was on the council before, remember three years ago, we did this then, we did it back then. And we repurposed and utilized money within my budget to make it happen in that year. So we weren't asking for additional money. Um, to be presented by this can, this body. We're here again today to do the same thing. We're here again to ask, uh, to agree to open the wage opener for the union contract. Uh, now, to. Make this change that Mark has come up with and I'll let him explain that to you. We've already met with the union. Uh, the union has agreed to this and they are um, waiting just for the approval from you guys on next week if this, the vote goes that way so that we can implement this October the seventh. Uh, this would be invaluable to us uh, with the recruiting drive to put this out. Um, that we go from fifty-four thousand where we're at now and the starting salary is sixty-one thousand. That puts us above Frederick City. That puts us above Washington County Sheriff's Department. Albeit, we know that's all short-lived because they'll be eventually moving above us again, but that'll be for all. Uh, well, the Frederick Cities, they have a contract and then their contract uh, comes up. Their next contract cycle comes up and they'll, they'll automatically go above us by a little bit.
What about Washington County?
Washington County, they don't have a, they don't have a contract. So the county commissioners get anytime, can raise those salaries anytime they want. And uh, if the sheriff goes in and asks for that, then they can agree to do that and they're at the whim of making those changes anytime. So because we're on a three-year cycle with our, our contracts, our, our current contracts, uh, we're always trying to play catch up three years later. And um, I think we have some solutions to that moving forward that we've talked about and we've, we've talked about with the, the union and I think there might be some. Um, some value in the fact that I think they upgraded what we want to do uh, with that. Uh, so we're not going to do this every year. We don't have to go back in three years from now and do this again. I think this, the value is, is there, but I want to let Mark talk about the actual numbers and the money. Um, what it costs and what it's not going to cost um, the city of Hagerstown today. We got a few more.
Yeah, I, I mean, just to recap what the chief said, we are, we're in the third year of a three-year contract. We have fallen behind the, the competitors. So our closest competitor obviously being the sheriff's office. Um, right now, we're trying to recruit for a February Police Academy and we're trying to recruit um, some. Some six, seven thousand dollars less than, than the sheriff's office. So what we're looking to do here now, before the contract comes back open is adjust the pay within our current budget funds. Um, move officers that are currently in step one to, to twelve, up three steps. Uh, someone that's in step thirteen, they'll go up two steps. Somebody that's in step fourteen, they'll go up one step. Um, at the end of the, the pay scale, which will be those that are currently in the, in the step of fifteen or higher. They will not see an increase. This, this increase is geared towards starting pay and officers with less than, than eight years on the job. This would impact thirty-eight of our current police officers. Um, thirty-six of them will have less than, less than eight years on the job. For starting pay, the increase would be a, a little bit over sixteen percent. That percentage slowly goes down based on their years of service. This uh, this will put us above the, the county currently um, to help us recruit those resources. We currently have vacancies. We'll be able to pay through this, through those vacancies and the, and the savings associated with that. We're also, the chief has also chosen to, we're lapsing right now, not filling some senior positions because of some retirements. So that's provided the funding to be able to do this without impacting the current, current budget.
Just, just a, a point of clarification that I know that this body will be asked is we are not reducing the amount of officers.
We are not reducing.
No.
I mean, the, the goal is the opposite, right? The goal is to increase the number by enhancing the starting.
Correct. My, my goal is to hopefully be coming back in front of you in the next month or two and asking you to give me the seven positions back. That we used to pay for one of the pay raises a few years ago. Bring me back up to ninety-eight as a, as a number. That's my, that's my hope and my goal.
I hope that happens.
And. We, we think we have a goal, a pretty good opportunity with what we're doing here. And uh, there's some other things that I'll be coming back to you guys with uh, early next month. That I think will be some, some additional things that can give us. Some real opportunity to make some, some leaps and bounds changes uh, quicker. Than just hiring at a entry level, going through an academy kind of setting, which is what this sets up to do right now. But more importantly than, than just recruiting is it's rewarding all those young people that I talked about just a little bit ago about all the work that they're doing. It rewards them with that money now that they would be getting in July. For all the hard work they've been doing, it gives them that, it gives them that now and it's, it tells them that they, they have value. This, this will only affect three?
Four sergeants.
Four sergeants. Um, based on the way our pay scales are done and both motions are in your, in your packet there and explains that. Um, anyone that's, that's at that top end of the pay scale doesn't impact anybody in management anywhere else. So. Those four sergeants are um, junior in the sense that they're in that, that lower side. So they'll, they'll get a small pay bump just to keep them in line. With the current pay scales that we have going, so.
The, the officers, did you say step fifteen that will not, did you say fifteen won't change?
Fifteen and above.
Fifteen and above. So for those, how many officers is that, that is uh, step fifteen or above? Um, and how? How is there, I don't want to say money as appreciation, but how is that? How do you ca, you know, like, how do you make them whole? Maybe that's the, what I'm looking for. Um, if they don't see anything, is it?
So. The reason why we're doing this the way we're doing it and the only reason why we're doing this the way we're doing this is because of the union contracts. Uh, one of the other unions in the city has a Me Too clause. So if everyone gets a pay raise, they get that pay raise as well. And we know that that's not, this body doesn't have the ability to do that. So I'm doing what I'm doing because I have my budget. I'm using my money to do this for my people. And in order to not trigger that rule, someone has to not get a pay raise.
And we're, we're asking them to sacrifice now.
Yes.
Knowing that in July with a new contract, the new negotiations will address them.
And then, and we're, we're anticipating that, that year is that, that they'll get their, they'll get their due next contract negotiations. Um, I would love to be able to do every one of those guys. And, and I, I've got the budget to do that, but, but unfortunately the, the clause that's in the union contracts kind of hampers our ability to do that. Um, and hampers your ability to do that. So we're trying to work within the rules.
Gotcha.
And um, and we did this the last time as well. And, and again, I give all the credit to those senior guys that are, who, who want to say, yes, do this because they want more people here. They want to keep the people that we have. Um, they, they have the same feelings that we all have and they're willing to sacrifice that for right now. Uh, knowing that, you know, if we can do this, we do it well, that we can maybe make a, a big game changer.
And the, and the increases for those with last years of services to help with retention, right? Because we know that officers tend to leave to go to other agencies. So this is going to help reduce that number.
Seven-year timeframe is what we lose most.
It's a, it, you're, you're a free agent in law enforcement now, you know, it's, it's, you know. You're going to travel where you can go, just like the nurses. I mean, that's why you have traveling nurses that you didn't have ten years ago. Uh, the value is there. So uh, we can retain the officers that we have because it's a lot. Uh, obviously it's a lot easier to keep someone than to train somebody new and get them up to speed. But the value that you can't put a number to is the experience level.
Right, right.
Um, you know, when you're constantly bringing new people in the door is when, you know, that, that fear factor for me is that mistakes can happen that can really hurt an agency and hurt a city. Um, just because of inexperience. Um, we, we hire the best and they get trained very well and they, they've never let me down or the city down or anybody sitting in this chair down. And I don't anticipate that happening, but I want to keep those senior officers because that experience has got a value to it. You can't put a number to. You just can't.
That's what I think I was trying to figure out how to say, how do you, how do you keep those officers um, so that you don't have, you know. Of course, we want to grow it, want to bring in new people, but we also want to keep the experience and keep those that have been committed to the city of Hagerstown for so long. Um, you know, uh, loyalty these days is, is so easy to, and to be loyal to the city through all of the, the reformations and the changes and all of that and to stay, right? So that was where my question was coming from and that. So thank you.
You guys have anyone?
Looks good.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So look forward to coming back in two weeks, three weeks, yeah, for some additional thoughts. Um, in working with, with the, the guys in the back here that uh, I, I think are going to be extremely productive.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
City Administrator?
All right, and whoever wants to take credit for all of that, have at it. As long as these guys.
They get paid. I don't care who takes.
Yeah, as long as these guys are, are telling, I don't care who takes credit for it. Um, I got a bunch, Mayor. I'm sorry about that, but we've got a huge weekend uh, coming up here in Hagerstown. Um, we have an arts panel discussion uh, tomorrow night, or no, Thursday night, seven nineteen to five thirty at Lighters Fine Catering. Um, these are all going to be participants in the mural creations that are going to be associated uh, with Hagerfest that um, we're, we're looking forward to. Again, that's over at Lighters. Uh, Imbu, I M B U E, I think I'm saying that correctly. Uh, is on nine twenty, Friday night, five to eight at sixty West Washington, hosted by Merge Artist Collective. Uh, that will showcase, showcase local art. I've got your, you, contagious. Showcase local artists, uh, and that showcase will end Sunday. Again, that's where the old uh, French academics uh, used to be. So stop in and see that. And then uh, we go from one end of the cultural trail to the other with activities starting Saturday. City Park Fall Fest uh, from eleven to eight in City Park, vendors, pony rides. Um, living history and family entertainment and fireworks over the lake at seven forty-five. Also at the same time in City Park, just a little different location, I believe by the band show. Will be the South End Block Party uh, from eleven to three, hosted by the Bester Community of Hope, Free Family Fun. Open to the public, honoring the strong and vibrant families in my South End community and our South End community. Uh, live music vendors, all that good stuff. Uh, always a well-attended event for a great uh, community in the South End. And then Hagerfest, Music and Arts Festival, eleven o'clock uh, to seven PM in the downtown. It spans the length of the cultural trail with six different locations of music and arts. Uh, again, uh, we're bringing that back after a lot of years. And uh, I think that's going to be a great time for everybody that can, you know, travel back and forth. And then lastly, the event Medal of Honor, Neighborhood's First Day of Hope uh, from twelve to four at Wheaton Park. Uh, this year's theme is celebrating our Hispanic neighbors. Free entertainment, community services, health screenings, vendors and food. So you go from one end to the other, start at Wheaton Park, end up in City Park. It's going to be, it's going to be a big day and I will not be able to participate in it. I'll be going to the interna, International City and County Managers Association uh, Conference in Pittsburgh. Uh, that conference is looking. At uh, what I'm going to be focusing on are several uh, panels with uh, related to homelessness and vagrancy and also. Policing recruitment and retention. So it all kind of blends in, just showing that. Everyone is looking for solutions when it comes to these things and hopefully you'll bring back a lot of my fellow city managers within the tri-state area going. So looking forward to that. Uh, and uh, we've already talked about uh, the great job that folks did on the water main break on Saturday and Sunday. Um, just a tremendous job to get water back. And then lastly, I, I just want to send a thanks uh, out to. The Hagerstown Flying Bucks Cars and Downtown Baseball for just a phenomenal uh, inaugural season of baseball downtown. One hundred seventy-six thousand plus visitors into the downtown uh, from May fourth until uh, last Sunday. And all of that being done with zero, zero public safety issues.
Wow.
So that is a testament to um, Hagerstown Police Department, Hagerstown Fire Department. And their uh, and their stepped-up vigilance at the beginning of the season. Uh, we purposely began to back away, at least on the police side. Fire stayed engaged, obviously, but at least on the police side, tried to back it off. And not be as visible, although it was hard to keep Mark Renner out of, out of the, uh, out of the ballpark. Um, and they didn't want him to leave the ballpark because he kind of became a staple with everyone. So. Um, hats off to, to the, to the, you know, to the front, uh, to the front office. But really to the, to the, to the young kids that were working uh, game day events. And like I've said several times, they were drinking water out of a fire hose. And they did just a tremendous job. And I think the culmination of that was how they handled without their front office staff there primarily. Uh, the Aaron Brooks Celebration. I mean, they were just amazing. So um, I will not be here next week. Uh, I'll be in Pittsburgh and I will see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Councilmember Brady?
You know, I got about a million things going through my head right now, mostly because of comments made last night, but the hour is late. Um, and I'll just say in regard to that. While I understand that there is, there are personal concerns. By citizens of Hagerstown, no one likes their space violated. No one likes to feel uncomfortable. Um, I have significant issue with the fact that those concerns are being stoked and manipulated uh, for political gain. And I'll have more to say on that at future meetings. Um. Excellent list of activities, Mr. Administrator. Would you mind sending an email out to us so we don't forget any of that?
Main Street, Hagerstown.org.
All right, there you go. Um, everybody at home, MainStreetHagerstown.org. Okay. Um, and you know, I just, I just want to say that um. It, it is the late hour, but I am continuously impressed by the quality and quantity of work. That this mayor and council gets done on a regular basis. Um, and uh, I just want to thank my. Fellow members here in, in, you know, in, in the fact that this, this is just an honor to be part of this. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Because I just want to say, it's not really late. We've just been here since two. So you can say a late hour and I'm like.
I haven't eaten at all yet today. So I'm looking forward to a meal.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burnett.
So I want to touch on the town hall that was, that occurred last night and the reasoning why I was not in attendance. I did email Senator's Office to decline invitation due to prior obligations. As in, my daughter had her first volleyball game yesterday. We have put gymnastics on hold and she has been exploring volleyball, flag football and basketball. And I'm just so proud of her for stepping outside of her comfort zone and I'm behind her every step of the way. In addition to that email to Senator Quarterman, I did look at the, the press release or the flyer that went out and some of the verbiage was misleading in regards to this body not engaging with the public as we've been doing for weeks and this administration has been doing this whole time, is addressing concerns from citizens at these public sessions, also via email, in person. Also, there's opportunities to come to our regular sessions by citizens to speak to us, so we do that part and we'll continue to do that part. And also, thank you to Public Works and City Engineer and HPD for responding to my numerous emails regarding the resident in the sidewalks. For utility trucks parking on the sidewalks and blocking pedestrians and also those sidewalks are owned by the residents and how that damages their property. This particular person sent a picture, posted a picture on Facebook with cones this time. The utility trucks was at her residence and they had cones to block where they're going to be working at, so just thank, thank staff for, for looking out for that resident. And also, if there's an opportunity to look at ordinance to enforce that even further, I think that'll be worth exploring. Thank you.
If you'll indulge me and you can set a timer for me if you want to.
Have at it.
But.
He's hungry. I mean, I am too, but.
I have a, I have a bit of a mouthful here, but I also wanted to address last night's public safety meeting. And I just wanted to go on record to formally address Senator Quarterman's letter. Until last night, I didn't really understand. Mr. Quarterman mentioned that he felt none of the council had formally responded to his letter. With the exception of, the exception of Councilman Alshar, so I'll formally address this. Mr. Quarterman, I refuse to feed any more divisive language. So I'm going to treat you with respect and kindness because you are both my neighbor and our town state representative. I live in walking distance and I frequent your family's grocery store as much as anyone. We're both raising young families here in town and I think we're much more alike than the current environment would allow anybody to realize. But what's very clear to me, after both your letter and last night's public safety meeting, was one key thing. And I believe that we, and I say we, in the collective we, the citizenry of Hagerstown, yourself, folks in the room, we all want to live in our beautiful town without our children, you know, stumbling upon a discarded needle. No one wants to worry about their garage being broken into, your car being rummaged through, your bicycle, your garden furniture stolen or damaged. We don't want to see illegal drug use out in the open. We all want to see resources for our most in need and we all want to continue to see our business community thrive. We all want to support our law enforcement and give them the resources and tools to do their jobs. Conversely, we all have different ideas and approaches on how to do this. This is where we're very different. It doesn't matter who's right or wrong. Citizens don't care who's right or wrong. They just want to see things that can get better, get better. You wrote a letter to Mayor and Council with your concerns. But rather than this being a meeting or a conversation with the council, it was publicly shared. So it's your right to do so, but I, in response, I, I felt and still feel that the appropriate, the appropriate way to address this was to do so in public meetings. It's the best way for us to transparently inform the citizens of what we're working on, what others are working on and what areas we can and can't influence to give facts and then to address your concerns. So I've made my own comments several times regarding the contents of the letter and around other violent incidents, but let me say this again. I do not accept any illegal drug use on our streets. I don't accept violence or crime. That will never be acceptable to me or I think anyone here. I'd also add that I was always taught to keep your head down and work hard. And if things aren't going well or the way you want, buckle down and work harder. I've also heard the philosophy, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and that is a fundamentally different perspective. So my opinion is that in a town where civic pride is already lacking, continuing to use divisive language or to use our platforms to instill fear or disparage the town or others is irresponsible. I do thank you for holding the town hall yesterday. I did attend and take notes. And even though I couldn't commit to being at the table because I had prior family commitments and was given a very short notice, if even one person came forward with a solution that wouldn't have attended our council members' public comments, which were, are conducted in the same manner as that meeting last night, or that would have reached out to a public official, then while I don't agree with your methods, something of value came to it. That said, I hope that now we can all roll up our sleeves as a city, a county and a state and move forward to work on solutions to help with the issues we're facing. That's the last I'm going to say on all that, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. You know, the way that you began your letter, I appreciate. And I appreciate multiple reasons because I think that, not I think, I know, that the city is looking for leadership that understands the importance of being diplomatic, being able to be respectful, to disagree, but to also know that we have to still come together in order to get solutions. So I really, really appreciate your leadership and, and the way you started that letter. I want to, your letter made me want to go back to this quote. And the quote on our agenda today says, "Hope is the only thing stronger than fear." "Hope is the only thing stronger than fear," and that's Suzanne Collins. And I agree with that. If there's tons and tons of things spread it just in, in keeping people in fear, then the only thing, the solution to that is to give some hope. And with that, I just want to say thank you to the Honorable Dr. Calvin Ball from Howard County. He's the Howard County Executive. He wanted to come and just learn about our town, our city. We walked around, we had lunch at the Broadax, who I have known Bob since fourth grade. And so it was just amazing. We had, he brought some security detail with him and I walked into the building and I was like, whoa. I didn't really research and know who was coming to visit, you know? But he reached out and he really just wanted to learn and see our, our city. Also, Lynn Foxwell was here and Ron Bowers and I met him at the stadium. And he puts stuff on baseball all the time on social media. He's a, he's a friend of mine. But we wanted him to come and see our stadium and to experience Hagerstown from sitting in the seat. And I just say that it was the first time I sat during an entire game. I sat in between Lynn Foxwell and Ron Bowers and I tell you, I don't feel any more politically ready. But it was amazing. I watched a baseball game. I got to hear just layers and layers of relationships that just go through all out the city, the city of Hagerstown. I just think that we are just so special and, and, and my prayer is that we continue to be special in the next administration. I'm excited about the Hagerfest. I'll be hosting an open mic. It's been a while. And I think that it's best that I've tried, that I do get on the open mic because then I won't say things like, I'd like to see on deck. And people are like, what's on deck mean? Well, at the open mic, that means I want to see you almost at the mic, so when it's your turn, you're already here. So I'm really excited about the Hagerfest open mic. I seen Commissioner Barr that was here and I actually wanted to say something to him in between, he left out. But thank you, Commissioner Barr, for being present within here today. I'm not sure if you were personally invited for something specific or if you just came in to listen. Either way, your presence was felt and appreciated specifically by me. Thank you to the city staff for the water main break. Quickly, I mean, just the information going out and then, and getting the water back online was really, really amazing. And Washington goes purple. Is it, it's Purple Fridays, correct? Alright, and so, Purple Fridays, just be mindful. Washington goes purple. I love coming through the city and seeing the purple lights. On Fridays, let's wear purple. If you haven't changed your lampposts, I mean, your light switch outside, put a purple light out there. It's great for awareness and it's really, I, I see purple all over now. And so thank you to Secretary Keller, former mayor, for sparking that across the state. And that's it for me. With that, we adjourned. Look, still ending awkward.
And welcome to Council Rap. I'm Wes Decker, joined by Hagerstown Police Chief Joey Kifer. Welcome, uh, long, uh, segment for you, or actually several items that you, you covered in, in, in the council meeting, but very important ones at that, and I, and I think especially in, in light of, of some of the things that have happened recently, and, and certainly, you know, we can point back to Senator Quarterman's letter. But these are issues that Hagerstown Police Department and, and you certainly have been overseeing for a long period of time. And I, I think one of the, the contributing factors, as, as has been cited, uh, for issues within the city is certainly vagrancy. And that was one of the items, uh, on the agenda that, that you and, and Ashley Roush presented on, uh, earlier. And I, and I just wanted to, to get to, to some of these things because I, I think they're certainly worth going over again, just so that people understand. And I, I, I think when you look at the way that, that policing has changed, as you outlined with legislation, dictating a, a, as it has forever, but then the changes in legislation. So, give me a little bit of a, I, I guess, an, an overall view of vagrancy, and just the way that you sort of, I don't want to say a, a attack, but, but, but sort of the way that you strategize to make this problem more palatable, I guess, for the community as a whole. Because I think that's what we're really hearing, people really noticing this.
Yeah, well, and, and, you know, as I said earlier, you know, the, the problem of vagrancy, and that's a, that's a broad term. You know, that, that, that vagrancy encompasses a, a broad spectrum of people. So it's, it's gonna cover those that are truly homeless, it's gonna cover people that have, uh, substance use disorder. Uh, it's gonna have people that have some mental health disorder, uh, and it's gonna have people that are just, um, that, they're unemployed. They, they choose not to work, they choose to hang out on the street, um, that's their lifestyle.
So their choice is to be unproductive members of society?
Yeah, yeah, unproductive in terms of working.
Right, 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 right.
And I'm, I'm not saying that everyone that, that we're talking about are criminals, that they've done criminal acts. Uh, the large majority of them don't, um, and, and the ones that, uh, that do, a large majority of them that do are nuisance type crimes, you know, that they're things that, again, albeit crimes, but they're not violent crimes, they're not things that are, uh, harming individuals, uh, on, uh, that they come across. But we're, we're trained to be afraid of things that doesn't, uh, resemble us and, and look like us and, and nor, and normal, normal things that we do, right? And that's, that's human nature, so I completely sympathize with the community and the people that, that, that have these feelings of, of fear and, and dread and, and, but it's my job to bring truth to that and explain what that really is. And so, when the council asks me to come in and, and they want to ask questions, I'm, I'm gonna be truthful about it. You know, but at the same time, sympathetic. So, so the problem has, has grown visibly, I think, we all can agree to that. It's grown visibly, um, here and anywhere you go, it, it's grown. Uh, but let's just talk about Hagerstown, because that's where should work and that's our responsibility. So, no matter that it's happened in other jurisdictions or around the country, this is where it's important at. So, it's grown here in the last five years, it's, it's visibly different. But what has happened in those last five years too, right? So, uh, you know, Justice Reinvestment Act gets, gets put into place and laws change, um, accountability factors change. Um, and with that comes, uh, you know, uh, sometimes, you know, in some degree, I think the, the, the politics of today, you know, the way that's being handled, uh, at, at the top level of our, our politics has given people the ability to think that they're not held, to be held responsible as well. So with the laws and with the, just the rhetoric and the, all the stuff going on, that, that's the new attitude for a lot of people, even people that aren't in the category of vagrancy. That that's just where people seem to be a little more than, than before. You know, I, I believe the majority of us i- in our society that don't feel that way, don't believe that way, don't act that way. But for that population that we see, that we're all concerned about, that seems to be the new attitude. And that makes it challenging, it makes it challenging because, um, you know, the citizenry will go out and, and try to address it themselves, and they get pushback verbal, uh, which is scary to some people. So, we are trying our best to, uh, deal with this new, or not new, but this, this growing, um, social problem with less tools on our tool belt.
Yeah.
And, and that's where, uh, creating an alternative response team with Ashley, um, you know, dealing with that, you know, coming up with a, um, a, a policy, unofficial policy, but a policy that we, we, we drive our men and women to, which is, you know, advise site arrest, because a lot of the things that we could, in the past, lock someone up for, we now have to issue a criminal citation for. So basically get a ticket, like a speeding ticket, you get a ticket and you get to walk along your merry way. That doesn't have the same impact.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have the impact for the community that's seeing this happening across the street from their house or from their business. That, you know, hey, we just, why didn't they lock, why didn't you lock them up?
Yeah, it's a source of frustration for them.
Source of frustration, and it's a source of frustration for the men and women that wear the uniform and do the job as well. So it is equally frustrating for us, but we have to work within the confines of the law. And the law says this, we're allowed to do, and we have to do that. And so, we're trying to find innovative ways and ways to, to, to make a difference. So, um, a lot, like I said this earlier tonight, you know, we have, uh, uh, our downtown crew comes in early before businesses open up, and anyone that's found vagrants, vagrancy that's going on downtown, whether it's homelessness or, you know, someone that's, that's, uh, nodded off because of their drug addiction, we, we roust them up, we get them moving, we get them, we get them to move along so that the businesses don't come in and have to, have to deal with that.
Yeah.
We're not solving a problem, we're just simply moving that away from the people that are coming downtown. And, and I think we've been pretty successful with that the last several months, uh, clearly with, with Scott's comments of having a hundred seventy thousand people come to the stadium and not a single, you know, police, no complaints from people that are coming down for those kind of issues. So, we, we've been doing those things that we can do within the confines. But in the same time, we're trying to get help to those people that want help, that need that help, that help with their substance use or their mental health, or homelessness, we, we're working very hard and diligently, again, with our partners, our community partners, and just in-house trying to find new ways to, to do this ourselves too, because there's just not enough of us all to do, to do that work.
And, and when it relates to, to substance abuse, because it, it's something that I think we've heard for months and months, and I'm sure it's true, uh, people have seen it, I haven't seen it personally, doesn't mean that it isn't true. Again, it's one of those things where, you know, it resonates with you when you see, uh, whether it is or whether you perceive something that is a drug deal or something that, you know, to, to that degree, you call the police, the police come and respond, and as you said, you know, with the law today, there's not a whole lot you can do. I think you said, uh, decriminalization of paraphernalia, if somebody has paraphernalia on. But that's almost criminalization then of policing, because it just takes that out of your hands. As, as you said earlier, hand them a piece of paper and they just move on their way. And, and it's like, I, I just don't understand how that makes sense. It's, you know, it, it, you know, who, who, who sat there as a legislator and said, hey, I, I, I think this might be a good idea?
You know, I, it, it's, it's unfathomable to me, um, in where I live and where I work and where we police. Uh, I'm sure that in large part, the legislative bodies have taken the more metropolitan, um, area, and they've, they've decided that's the policing all across the state of Maryland, which is how things get done. And whatever they feel like they think is being done, not the way to their liking in those metropolitan areas, gets translated to the rest of us, and, and the value system of different parts of our state isn't taken into consideration. Uh, I'll give you an example, you know, the value system here, for as long as I've ever been here, is that if you com- commit a disorderly conduct kind of thing, you got arrested for that. So, if you came from Montgomery County as an officer, you didn't do that there. The value system of the people that lived there weren't expecting you to make an arrest on a disorderly conduct case. So the policing was different.
Okay.
You still had the ability to do it there, but that wasn't the emphasis.
Yeah.
Where here, the small things is what we enforced that helped keep a lot of this stuff tampered down, because the small things led you into other things.
Yeah.
If I lock you up for disorderly conduct, and I put the handcuffs on you, and then I find you got drugs on you, and then I find you have a weapon on you, or you find something else.
Right.
Those are additional charges.
Yeah.
But when you take that ability away, when all I can do is give you a citation, now I've, I've, I've lost the ability to navigate beyond that for subsequent additional charges that could possibly have been there, that keeps you more honest as, as that civilian doing those activities in our community.
Yeah.
And so, albeit that, you know, metropolitan communities didn't do that, you know, that was the, the value system here, and it's, you know, maybe the value system is a little different in Eastern Shore, the value system is a little different further west from us. That's not taken into account when legislators at Annapolis decide to create these kind of laws.
Yeah.
They blanket it across, and it, it takes away the ability of the policing methods in the different areas of the state.
Wow.
That we used effectively and not abusively.
Yeah.
And I think there's just legislative that was looking at, you know, they were trying to, they were trying to take care of abusive policing that, uh, you know, may or may not have happened in the rest of the state somewhere else, but it wasn't happening here.
Yeah, it's.
And, and it's hurt, it's hurt how we do business, and, you know, we've come up with ways to try to get around it, and, but it's just not the same effectiveness that it was before.
No, because it was just so simple, and now that, uh, that, that impact is, is lost at this point. Uh, uh, another thing you mentioned, uh, earlier was, you know, wh- what kind of legal issues actually inhibit removing squatters from a property? Because there seems to be some sort of gray area there, when again, it only seems like common sense. If, if somebody's in a place where they don't belong, they don't own that property, nobody said you can be there, then it, it should be pretty clear that you can remove them from the property.
So, in this, in this particular case, from my understanding, I wasn't there, is that, uh, the gentleman that was actually renting the, the property somehow allowed these other users, drug dealers or whoever they were, to basically overtake his, his property. And at that point, I believe he, he vacated the property.
Yeah, I believe that's what the, the lady said at the meeting last night.
He vacated the property, uh, but when we show up, it's a civil matter, we don't get to dictate as police officers who has the rights to a particular property like that. So it becomes a civil matter, so there's an eviction process that has to happen and those things. So, so again, you know, for us, um, it's, it's, it seems like it might be common sense, and to some degrees it is.
Yeah.
But, uh, determining who has legal rights to a property isn't a police officer's job, that's a judge's job.
Wow.
And unfortunately, in that case, we had to do the advisement, and our guys tried everything they could. You know, but, but the people that are squatting, they know their rights to some degree.
Right.
And they know how to play that, and in this case, they did that, and it prolonged them being evicted out of that property, you know, for, for additional time.
Yeah.
You know, and I've talked to the, the, the brother of the owner of that property, and he subsequently has said, you know, we, he, he knew we did what we, what we could within the rights of what we had to do.
Yeah.
And we tried our best.
Yeah.
Um, but, but yeah, not every squatter situation's like that, you know, like I said, if it's just a vacant property and someone's showing up there, that's easy.
Okay.
No one was renting the place, you're trespassing, that's different.
All right.
Uh, this, this was more of a, you were invited in, you were allowed to be here, you're allowed to stay here by the person that was there, and now, you know, so now you've established residency because the person that had a legal right to let you there allowed you there.
Yeah, there were some extenuating circumstances.
Right, right.
Uh, in, in that case.
In that case, right, right.
Um, th- this whole notion, and, and, you know, I guess we've heard it for the last five years or so, and at some point, in some places, I'm sure it was true, but I'm pretty sure it wasn't true here then, and I'm pretty sure it's not true here now, defunding the police. When I hear that, like last night when I heard it at the public safety meeting, I said, what, what exactly is that? What are they talking about? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I, I wanna clear the air on that. So, what everyone is talking about is the, um, the lowering of the, the authorized strength of my police department. So, several years ago, we were authorized at a hundred and twelve police officers. We did not have a hundred and twelve police officers. Uh, we were down in the nineties, and it was in two thousand twelve-ish, um, maybe a little later than that. Um, that was much later than that, so it was two thousand, I'm, I'm, I'm getting my, my days, anyway. But four or five years ago.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
It definitely wasn't two thousand twelve.
Yeah.
We started to have a, a, a mass exodus of officers leaving the department, which really lowered our numbers down. And we had funded, open positions on our budget. Uh, I made the conscious decision, um, to approach Scott and, and this body to ask them to reduce my, my budget at strength by an amount, that I could take that funding, that money that was budgeted for those positions
Right.
and put it into the pockets of the men and women that were already still here working.
Somewhat similar to what you're doing now?
Okay, only now I didn't have to reduce my strength to do that, but that's when we did that.
Okay.
And we did that twice to help pay for then the new contracts, we reduced again. Again, people that weren't here, positions that were not filled, that were just on my budget.
Okay.
So if I would not have used that money in the way that I've used it, the money went, went back into the general fund at the end of the fiscal year to be used by finance for the things they use it for.
Right.
I simply asked this body to allow me to take money that was already in my budget, repurpose it to enhance the pay and salaries of the men and women here to entice and encourage and show the respect that they deserve to stay
Okay.
and not leave this department for another department. So, we increased their, their pay over that, that timeframe, um, anyway, it was between twenty-four percent, and I think thirty-seven percent, depending where you fell in this, in the pay scale. That is a massive, we should make more money than the sheriff's department for the amount of work that we do. But I'm also a realist, and I understand budgets, and I understand that this budget in the city is nowhere near the same budget size as what the county's budget is. So they have more ability and cha- and chances to do things than this body and this budget can do here. But I've been very open about utilizing, they've been very, very good to me about allowing me to repurpose my budgetary money to be efficient and to put it where I can use it the best, to get the best bang for my buck, and to me, that's fiscally responsible. That's what, that's what we should be doing.
Right.
Right?
Right, yeah.
I should be asking you, let me reuse the money now and not ask for new money.
Yeah.
Isn't that what we should be doing as a government entity, and that's what I've been very proud of trying to do? So, that's the defunding the police thing, is that because we reduced staff, not, but we reduced authorized strength numbers, that's been declared defunding the police, when it simply is, I just took that money and said, give me those seven positions, the money for that.
Yeah.
Reduce me down to here, let me put it over here, and put it where it's, where it's valued. That's, that's where that's at.
Okay, good. Uh, hopefully we can move on beyond that, I don't know, that just drives me crazy when I hear that, because I know that was not the case. Uh, a- another question related to that, is money the end-all and be-all at this point for police officers? Because, and the reason I ask that, obviously, uh, they're going to get a raise, as, as you talked about this evening, which is well deserved, um, but at the same time, I think with the level of competition, and it's almost basic economics at this point, it's supply and demand, uh, where do you want to go? Where do you want to, what, what do you want out of your job?
Right.
Ha, ha, has money just become that driver? I mean, it always is, but, but has, has, has it just elevated to the point where that's just it?
No, no, mon- money is, is obviously always that thing, it's always gonna be on the table.
Yep.
You, you're never gonna, you know, someone's gonna stay here for far less money than they can make somewhere else. But there are other things that, that, that the workforce is looking for in today's world, and not just in policing, you know, they want work-life balance, they want pay. They want, in, in my world, they want take-home cars, they want, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
They want to, um, sometimes not have to, they, they deserve to not have to work as hard as they're working, so that's where the manpower issue is, is valuable, to give them that relief.
Okay.
So, we're looking at work-life balance issues, that's one of the things we're gonna be bringing back to the council next month, uh, you know, a topic that's gonna cover that. So we're looking at work-life balance issues. That's one of the things we're gonna be bringing back to the council next month, uh, you know, a topic that's gonna cover that. You know, and we're looking at some other, um, incentive-based things that we think is important. Uh, we've been working really hard on take-home cars for, for municipality. We. Majority of my, my staff have take-home cars, believe it or not. Not everybody, but the majority do. And that's unheard of in a municipal police department. It's just something that county, the county sheriff's departments do and, and the state police does. But when it comes to city policing. Take-home cars are a rarity. And we made a decision, uh, you know, when I first took over and talking to finance and talking to Scott. That, you know, this was something that I really wanted to work on for, for a variety of reasons. One, that, that one component. But two, um, longevity of those vehicles, you know, it did last longer. It's, it's fiscally responsible to do that. We've got cars that last a lot longer than today than we did when we were sharing those cars twenty-four seven. So we're, we've proven that, that point of concept. But, you know, it takes, it takes a lot of money to get to that point as well. And, uh, and we're, and we're slowly getting there. And, you know, I, I know that, you know, if COVID wouldn't have hit when it hit. Uh, we had a plan, we probably would have been there by now, but that kind of game changes a lot of things unfortunately.
For sure.
Uh, but no, not everything's about money, uh, but a big, big chunk of it is. But work-life balance is a big thing.
Yeah, I mean, I mean. Yeah, because I, I'm, I'm not in your world and, and I respect everything that the men and women of the police force do for sure. So I, I'm not gonna sit. I'm, I'm not passing any kind of judgment. I'm just asking because that's the one thing that's been mentioned so much when you talk about defunding the police. The amount of money that's made because the other thing was, well, you know, the police officers in Hagerstown make so much less. Than the ones in the sheriff's office and surrounding areas and so on and so forth. So you, you've heard that.
And, and I have. And, and a lot of, you know, a lot of the, the things that. Don't get discussed when it comes to funding my police department is all the other stuff that we, we have that other agencies don't. We have virtual reality training, state-of-the-art training that we, that we use. And the guys love that training. Every one of our, our guys have, have the, have tasers. Every one of them have up-to-date body cameras. You know, a lot of agencies, even nearby us, not everybody has a taser. Not everybody has that piece of equipment. A lot of agencies, uh, young man, we, we just got from another agency, uh, down in, in central part of, of the, uh, the state. That's come to work for us, had to buy most of his equipment if he wanted it. Their agency didn't supply it. So there's a lot of that that goes around that people don't understand. So we've, we've really pushed the technology part, the drones and all the other stuff. The guys get to fly drones and do things that a lot of police agencies don't get to do. And, you know, there's value there, but there's also that money that's gotta be, be funded for that, right?
Yeah, you have to have the money.
But the value is it gives, it gives the, the men and women the opportunity to do those things that, that they enjoy. So that, that like use the drones. But then the value of what we get that out of policing using that drone. So we, we've got the drone for a variety of reasons, you know, that, and they all work. You know, the same thing with, you know, giving away their tasers and having the most updated tasers and all those other things that we do. We've gone, we're going to red dot optics for our guns, you know, to make us, um, more accurate at our shooting that we have to do. And, and we're, we're rolling that out. And, and, you know, so if you're a brand-new cadet coming out of the academy, guess what you got? You get, you know, you might be a senior guy, you don't get that, but the, the new, the new, the new guy coming out is gonna get it. And we're, we're starting to phase those things in. So we're spending, you know, the money appropriately. We watch our Ps and Qs and, and our budget. Um, Mark does a fantastic job and, and he's just a guru with all that stuff. And, you know, he, he helps to figure out how we can do a lot of these things with our current budget money. Um, which I'm really super proud of. That we, we don't come in here asking for any money all the time. And, and to me, uh, as I said earlier, that's, isn't that what government's supposed to be? Is fiscally responsible with the money that your taxpayers give you to do. So make the best of the money that you have. And, and my budget's never gone down. You know, the budget has never gone down in the years that I've been the chief here. It's gone up and, uh, and, and so there is no defunding of the police by this body. And I, I would never agree to defund my police department because there's just, it would, it, it's unfathomable to even say that.
I, I, I wanted to make one, one more point here and, and I, I hate to keep going back to Senator Quarterman's letter. But at the same time, about the time that that letter came out on July twenty-fourth, it was within the next couple of weeks after that. Because we had had two shootings here and one happened at about two o'clock in the afternoon. Well, the last time I checked, bad guys don't really check their watches and go, well, I don't know, it's two in the afternoon, not two in the morning. Maybe I better not commit this crime. But that being said, within that next two weeks, I believe Frederick City had about five shootings. In the span of, I think, twelve days or something like that. And Frederick is always the model city. People say, why can't Hagerstown be more like Frederick? Those shootings happened and I didn't hear the type of fallout. From five shootings in Frederick City that we got from two shootings here in, in, you know, within close proximity to each other. In the city of Hagerstown. And I just wonder how Frederick got a free pass on that. I mean, you know, I'm not trying to compare and contrast. It's just that people say all the time, man, Frederick, that's where it's at. And then that happens. And I can't imagine how the people in Frederick must have felt about that because that is not an everyday occurrence for them either.
Right, it's not. And, and, you know, that's, that's the thing, you know, any city, the size of ours, Frederick. Um, you know, you're gonna have these little ebbs and flows of, you know, little crime spurts. Um, I don't know any about their shootings. I don't know any about the, the ones that, you know, if there were any relationships to each other or not. What I can tell you is that for ours, the, 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 the shootings that we had. None of them, we actually had three, had three within a couple week period. So, um, none of them were related to each other. They had nothing to do with each other. They were contemporaneous incidental incidents that happens at that very moment. And, um, and it's unfortunate. It really is. It's, it's unacceptable. And I'm, you know, no one's saying that it's acceptable. Um, the fact that, uh, one of them happened in the middle of the day, you know, in a major thoroughfare of our downtown part of our city. Uh, it's scary. Don't get me wrong. By all means, and it's unusual.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'm not setting that aside like, oh, wow, that's, that's no big deal. I'm not saying that. I, I, yeah, I'm just making that comparison.
Uh, and, and, and I think if it wasn't for that particular incident, it may not have risen to the level that it did. Because the other incidents happened, um, in, in. Areas that most of our community would expect things like that to happen. And that's not being fair. I'm not trying to be callous about it. But it happened at a certain time, certain times of the day and areas that people have expected things like that to happen. Um, again, completely unacceptable. And for. Reasons that none of them should ever happen. But I can't control human behavior in an instant when it's happening right then and there. No one, no one can. And, you know, it's, it's not a predictable crime. I can't predict that someone's gonna pull a gun out and shoot somebody over an argument. I can't predict that. And I can't be everywhere I need to be. And I say me, I, you know, the uniform, the, the, the. The men and women wearing the uniform. And on those rare cases when you are, it's pure luck most of the time that you just happen to be in the right place at the right time. Or right place in the wrong time, depending on how you wanna look at it. What I will say is that in every one of those incidents, every one of them, even the one we had, you know, yesterday, you know. What happened? We have people in custody. We have guns off the street.
Yeah, the response was.
The response is fantastic. I mean, the men and women last night, you know, foot chases and within minutes of the incident happening, had two people in custody. And within less than eight hours, the third person was in custody. You know, in the instance that would happen during that two-week span. People were in custody within hours of that happening. Um, you know, it. No one does it as good as my guys do it on the street. But we're, it's, as I said tonight, policing is a reactionary sport. It, it is. We try to be proactive and that proactivity is to, um, say, you know, West Decker was, wants to come into. This area and commit some kind of crime, whatever that might be. And you see me in the area, you see me there enough, you'll be like, you know what? Tomorrow, I'm gonna do it tomorrow. And you may not come back tomorrow. You may do somewhere else, but that's, that's what we talk about when you're talking about, uh, you know, diverting crime. Is if you have the intent and you really wanna do it, I'm not stopping you. I may just prolong you. With my, with my patrolling and, and, and being my visibility. And those are important factors. We wanna do that. But the, the reality is that I can't. If you decide that you walk. Into a bar tonight to go have a drink and you decide that the person that you get into a shovel match and you wanna pull a knife out and hurt them. How am I stopping that? As, as a police department, I can't. So, you know, policing is all about. Uh, it's a team sport. It's a team sport that requires our public to be our biggest teammates. And, and in order for us to be effective, they need to let us know what's going on. They need to tell us what's going on. They need to come forward and be, be brave and do those things. And in the same breath, when the arrest is made and it goes to court, they need to go to court and do the same thing. Because if you want the best bang for your buck, then victims need to be victims when they go to court and not just the day that it happens. Witnesses need to go to court and not be witnesses just when it happened. Because when that breaks down at the courtroom. Then plea bargains happen and they get slaps on their wrists instead of, you know, ankle chains and bracelets to be, to be wearing. And that's, that's just how that works in the, in the justice system. So it's tough. It's tough in our, in our society today for people to wanna carry through and do those things, but it's, it's important. And if, and if this community wants to change what they're seeing and feeling, then everyone needs to be involved. And we're here to, to be the people that do the work for you, but you need to help us. You need to help us.
Well, especially in cases like that. I mean, the state's attorney sat right here and said that, uh, several weeks ago. You know, that the, the witnesses somehow disappear, uh, you know, many more crimes are committed now with guns than ever before. It's kind of the tool of choice. Uh, instead of people throwing fists, they pull out a gun. And, and I guess that, that leaves, I, I wanna wind this, this down a little bit, but, uh, one of the final questions I have, you know, we, we see all the time. Or I do, uh, certainly the posts that you put out on Facebook, uh, do a great job of getting that information out to the public, uh, just what it is that you're doing. And, and all of these guns come off the street. What, what, what is the percentage? Do you believe, uh, of, of guns that are illegal? I mean, guns that, that, that someone does, does not buy legally that end up being used in a crime? What, what's that percentage here in this area, do you think?
Uh, pretty much everything that you see us seizing, when you're seeing that those seizures are not legally bought guns by the person that uses that gun.
That's scary.
That's, that's the reality of that. There's, um, you know, the, the legal gun owner. Um, in some cases have sold their gun for, for drug because they need money and they, they do it. They sell it to a drug dealer. Or it's been burglarized and stolen from them or stolen out of their car. Um, variety of reasons how that gun makes it into the hands of the people that are using them for these crimes. Um, but, you know, the, the, the legal gun owner isn't the one typically using the gun to commit the crime. They may be giving that gun away to someone that they owned for, for whatever reason. Uh, because of their, their substance use disorder or, or other reasons, you know. Um, you know, there's, there's all kinds of reasons, but the majority of the guns you see that we, we're shown that, that in our pictures that are seized, they're, they're not. From illegally owned gun owner that we took it from.
Uh, a- a- anything you wanna leave, uh, leave people with tonight in terms of a, kind of a, kind of a final statement? Uh, I mean, we hit on a lot of different things. I think we, we, we got a lot of facts out there, a lot of truth, but, uh, a- a- anything you, you, you wanna close with?
Yeah, I mean, just, look, it, it, it always seems sometimes like things are really bad. And, and look, these crimes are heinous and, and they shouldn't be happening anywhere, uh, especially here in Hagerstown. And I, maybe it's a double-edged sword that we put out the information that we do. Um, because we've got a lot of people saying, we wanna know what you guys are actually doing. But when you put that out, then people get scared by what they see.
Look at everything that's happened.
And, and I think, uh, and I'm, I'm, I'm not saying this to accuse other jurisdictions. But I think a lot of jurisdictions don't put out everything that they do because that message has a, has a dark side to it. So I'm very proud of the men and women that work for this department. I'm, I'm, I'm proud to be, uh, working with them. And, and trying to give them the help they need. And they deserve everything they get. They deserve everything they get from this body. They deserve everything and, and they deserve, deserve more. Um, but more importantly, I wanna say that I, I appreciate the, the community here in Hagerstown. And the community here in Washington County is a large, at large, for just the overwhelming support that we all feel, that we get from that community as. Uh, the men and women that wear the uniform, whether you're in this uniform, the lighter blue or gray that the sheriff's department wears or, or the, the tan and brown that's the MSP wear. I hear it all the time where I go, people just very gracious and they know that we're, we're, we're all doing a good job. Um, and, and they're, they're, they're not blaming us. They're not blaming us for the activities that's going on. Uh, and, and, you know, they're frustrated. I get it. But I think there's a lot of really, really super smart people in this community that understand the realities of life. And, uh, the reality is this, if you live a lifestyle that has you. Uh, engaged in illegal use of, of narcotics or, uh, any other criminal activity. Your likelihood of having bad things happen to you by the people that we're talking about in here tonight are elevated. If you live a life that doesn't have anything to do with those things, then the likelihood of you having something bad happen like that to you is almost zero. And they're, they're not targeting you and me, people that don't live a criminal lifestyle. These are engagements of people that, that have liked lifestyles that wind up hurting each other. Um, and thankfully, uh, innocent people, uh, aren't being caught up in that. Uh, and I must say, it won't ever happen because it does, but they're not targeting those of us that are living that, that. Lifestyle that we want to, which is just get up and do the right thing for fellow human beings and, and yourself. So Hagerstown's a good place. Uh, born and raised here. My, you know, my, my family's here and if I felt differently than I, I wouldn't be here. You know, and, uh, and that's, that's easy for me to say and, and hard for some people to, to accept that on their end. But don't get caught up with the trolls that are online on every social media post about Hagerstown. Do your digging, do, do some looking. Look at the, look at the post that, that you see in Frederick City and you'll see the same comments coming from people that are trolling Frederick City as well. And, uh, you know, there's just that population of social media users that, um, that, that have that, that element and. Don't read it. It's not worth it.
I, I think that's a very sage advice and, uh, you know, always appreciate your time. Always a good chat. Uh, we could talk about a million more things, I'm sure. But, uh, you know, probably time to wrap this up. So again, thanks to you, uh, thanks to everyone for watching. And I will see you next time on Council Rap. For now, that is a wrap.